Okay.
Guess that's my notice.
Yep, you're recording.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's, I'm gonna call to order the Bridgewater Town Council meeting. It is Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have two condolences tonight. I'll first start with condolences on behalf of the council to the family of Paul F. Christensen upon his passing on May 5th, 2021. Mr. Christensen served in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. Again, on behalf of the council, condolences to the family of James Sakosha upon his passing on May 10th, 2021. Mr. Sakosha served with combat operations in the United States Army Air Forces during World War II. He was one of the few remaining World War II veterans. He was a founding member of the Bridgewater Veterans Club and was in the automobile business in Bridgewater for many years. I would next like to have a moment of silence for all those veterans and first responders who have passed. Hey, just as a reminder, this meeting is being aired live and recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens wishing to tune into the meetings may do so via Facebook Live. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, May 11th, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I believe I heard Counselor Wood and Counselor Souza. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry, is Dr. Perry here? I haven't.
I do not see him.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just checking. Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is announcements from the president. I have none. Next item is C, Proclamations. We have none. Next item on the agenda is Citizens Open Forum. I would remind any citizens wishing to speak, I will take you in the order as I see. Please state your name, your street, and please keep it under three minutes. Is there any members of the public that wish to speak? I see Ms. Neary.
Good evening. Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. I am here to speak out regarding the marijuana resolution being presented here later. Unfortunately, here we are again. As in the past, I am asking why our council would encourage having more drugs in our community. If we want a healthy, safe town, we wouldn't want to make marijuana more easily available. To only look at increased tax dollars is a mistake. Today's marijuana is not your grandfather's pot. The THC levels that once were 1% or 3% back in the 70s are now in double and triple digits. The Cabernet Sea Salt Chocolate Bar from Theory Wellness has THC of 107mg. The health concerns are becoming more and more evident. I understand that this resolution being presented here tonight is to obtain the opinion of our counselors, and one of our counselors is trying to lay the groundwork for ultimately having pot shops in our town. Tonight, I'm asking that you not refer this marijuana resolution to any committee or even consider voting on it on another day. Please put an end to this resolution tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Any other members of the public? I see Mr. Ivaldi.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Ed Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane in Bridgewater. I would also like to just comment, as Mrs. Neary did, on Resolution R-F1-FY21009, which is on the agenda for later in the meeting. As the town's elected body, I'm asking you not to accept this resolution for the following reasons. The resolution states the following: that the public supports allowing retail sales of recreational marijuana, and that the results in Bridgewater show strong positive support. It's obvious that whoever authored this resolution clearly wrote it to advocate a position. The truth is that 57% out of 1891 votes cast is by no means an overwhelming majority of citizens, especially considering that only 11% of the registered voters participated in the election. Let's put things in a perspective. 1,079 citizens voted yes on the non-binding question. That's only 6% of the total registered voters in Bridgewater. So how does that equate to showing strong positive support? It doesn't, as it's merely, it's a very small sample of citizens. If the turnout had been closer to, say, 40%, which was the turnout back in 2010 when the charter was voted in, perhaps this could be looked at a little bit differently. As the town's elected body, you must consider all data points as you discuss and decide next steps. Other points include information from the medical community, law enforcement, public safety, education, and municipal finance organizations, especially in the early adopter states that already have several years' experience with this. Although listening to voters is certainly part of your job, you're also expected to act for those who cannot cast a vote, particularly those under the age to vote, who are most vulnerable to the negative consequences associated with recreational marijuana. We are moving way too fast to approve this in our town without taking into account the costs of such a decision. The key question is this: if there's only one perceived benefit, that being potential revenues, but numerous risks and other disadvantages which have clearly been documented and publicized throughout the country, then how can anyone intelligently support this? I urge you to please take an educated position on this issue, do all the research you can before making any decisions. I also believe it's your responsibility as elected officials to help educate citizens, so they can see through the same lens that you do when you ultimately vote on this. It simply cannot be a decision based on money alone. The future of our town and many generations of citizens to come will feel the impacts of this one way or another. Let's continue to keep Bridgewater a family-oriented community that truly embraces the well-being of every individual. Thanks for your time and for all you do for our town.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ivaldi. Is there any other citizens wishing to comment?
Yes, Taylor Sullivan here, 250 Orland Park.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Perfectly fine. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just on my iPhone.
No worries.
Good evening. So I'm here again, as I have been off and on for the past four years, to express my opposition to the resolution brought forward by Mr. Wood and Mr. Chase. You know, I've heard, I just want to start off by saying, again, I've heard a particular counselor actually mention that marijuana is not a gateway drug, and that's particularly concerning for me. Any counselor who is going to, you know, be involved with this resolution or, you know, even if you're considering right now, if you're sitting there considering voting to move this forward, I would ask you to please take a pause and educate yourself. I've mentioned it before. Talk to someone who has had an addict in their family, and I will guarantee you about 85, 90% of people would say, what was your first experience with drugs? And it would be marijuana. So educate yourselves, find some families or users. Second of all, this is just a data point. In, in states that have legalized marijuana, including our state, since legalization, there has been, on average, of a 25% increase in cannabis use disorder for 12- to 17-year-olds. So again, any of counselors that are going to say, well, my district voted yes overwhelmingly, well, you have a moral obligation to look at the youth of your district and see, do you want an increase in cannabis use disorder? Like, how could you possibly have on your conscience to vote for that? Second of all, again, we're here to educate yourself, to educate yourself, and, you know, if you wanted to connect with families or people that have had experience with marijuana, you can reach out to Bridgewater Cares. Lastly, the vote was, you know, during, you know, COVID times, the turnout was 11%. A lot of people were afraid to go out and vote. By no means should that vote, which was non-binding, be used to justify having more drugs in our town. I know it's hard for counselors. I know if you're in a district that voted yes, you're gonna say, okay, well, that's what my district wanted. Well, no. If, if, look at the vote back in 2016, Bridgewater voted no against legalization of marijuana. So you can't pick and choose. You know, one of the counselors ignored that vote, which had over 40% of the town vote, but now wants to focus on 11% of the town that voted during a COVID pandemic. And lastly, this shouldn't even be moved forward tonight. This should be completely shut down. It's very clear this isn't in the best interest of our town. The only thing that a particular counselor could talk about is for monetary reasons, but I'm sorry, having more drug use in your town, there's not enough money to justify that. So I ask those counselors who are considering going along with Mr. Wood, I ask you to use your conscience and, and pretend that you're a family that has dealt with marijuana use and cannabis use disorder, and, and vote that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Is there any other citizen wishing to speak?
Rushton, can I? Mr. Rushton?
Yes, who's this?
Jennifer Smith.
Jennifer Smith. Go ahead, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. I just want to express my opposition to pot shops in Bridgewater yet again. Been doing this since 2017 now. I strongly disagree with Mr. Wood and Mr. Chase's proposed marijuana order. I am wondering why a certain counselor thinks this non-binding vote should count while the vote back in 2016, which did bind towns, did not count. Here's the thing. I can bet if he, that if he did not get the outcome he wanted this April, he would say that vote did not count because it was non-binding. It just seems that this certain counselor will continue to propose ordinance till he gets the outcome in his favor. He continues to peddle this idea that people want it in town, when in fact, what really changed here is that we have two established dispensaries, which we did not have back then, with a database full of customers who live in town, which I'm sure are highly addicted to this drug. Not only did this certain counselor try to push this again, but in the middle of a pandemic. For me, I can't even believe this was allowed on the agenda again, after all the people who cared about the safety of residents fought so hard for this ban a couple of years ago. I really don't recall of any other town officials in nearby towns trying to get drug businesses in their town. I guess those educated towns understand what a detrimental impact it would have to their town. Many towns nearby do not care about measly pot revenues. I also don't buy the revenue idea he keeps pushing, especially when you compare the measly revenues to the town's budgets. I mean, it's ridiculous. What kind of morals does that say we have here, if we have that attitude about doing anything for money? For four years, this counselor has tried to bring pot shops to Bridgewater now. For four years, the residents of Bridgewater have had to hear him talk incessantly about marijuana. I think the residents of Bridgewater feel as though there are more important issues in town than marijuana. If he wants to speak about marijuana, to anyone that will listen, he should do it on his own time. The residents are tired of these ordinance that he keeps proposing, and would like to see some real, actual items get done in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mrs. Hanson, go ahead, please.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Thank you for letting me speak. I know you all got my lengthy letter, and I thank you for reading it. I did get some responses, so I'm not gonna repeat everything that's in that letter. But I, I can't say anything better, per se, than what Mrs. Neary, Mr. Ivaldi, and the last two, Taylor, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name of the last one, but I agree, they can't say it any better. But I, I do question why this issue keeps being pushed by, as we all know, one particular counselor. It has been an ongoing thing, and we do have better things in town, and it's just dangling a carrot. I, I think about it. Marijuana retail shops are being promoted in the state of Massachusetts by dangling a carrot in front of the towns, saying, if you allow this in your town, you'll get 3% revenue for sales tax, and you can split that between the town and the school. As always, just like tobacco and other things, there's always that carrot that's being dangled, and if you object, then it means you don't care for the schools. That will come back to you. And if you think about this fact that where he wants to promote a drug, so we can supposedly get a certain amount of money to share with the schools, yet we are trying to teach our children not to use drugs, not to smoke, not to drink, but it's okay for us to support our schools with revenue from those very same products that we're saying no to. There is a sign at one of the entrances to the parking lot of the old high school. It's obscured by brush right now, but it says Drug-Free Zone. Yet, here we are promoting this to be in our town that is supposed to give revenue to this very kids that we're saying don't use it. It's hypocritical. It's, it's ridiculous, and we're not gonna get this, the high expectation of revenue. And it hasn't been necessarily said that the taxes will go down, but it's implied. And a lot of people, I think, are under the impression that our home taxes will go down because of this. And Mr. Wood corrected and said in one statement, no, he never said that. He only said that we'd get, you know, more money, but it, it wouldn't be that the taxes would go down. We all know taxes aren't gonna go down because of this.
Mrs. Hanson, you're coming up on your three-minute limit, please.
Well, I, I just appreciate if everybody really, really looks strongly at this and look at what the Gallup poll that they say that they claim supports strong, and I, I just want more evidence and really, really think about this. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Hanson. Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Anna or Josh, I do not see anybody with a hand raised.
I do not see anyone either.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, E, Appointments. Letter A, the Charter Review Committee would entertain a motion, as one motion, to reappoint the Charter Review Committee.
So moved. Second.
Counselor George, any concerns?
None.
Counselor Souza?
No, sir.
Any discussion from the council?
Just have one question.
Counselor Wood?
It, it's a 30-day extension. Is that enough time?
I'll defer to the town manager.
Yes, I believe that is enough time. I think Charter, excuse me, Charter Review Committee is coming to your council meeting to present their findings and finalized report within that timeframe.
Counselor Columbotus?
I would just like to thank the, the individuals who volunteered to serve on this committee. It's a very important committee. As we've seen, there's some, our charter's not perfect, and, and the, the more we can improve it, the better. So I applaud their volunteering. Thank you.
Excellent point. Any other counselors? Okay, here are none. I'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Dr. Perry? You're on mute.
Okay, I'm on mute now. Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, F, Hearings. It is 7:22. Open the hearing for Petition P. 2021-011, Cumberland Farms of Massachusetts Incorporated doing business as Cumberland Farms for a change of beneficial interest and change of officer. I'm going to refer to the town manager on this.
Mr. President, the Council for Cumberland Farms has requested a continuance while they finalize or double-check their petition. The petition has been advertised, so opening the hearing tonight is required, but they are, at this time, asking you to continue the hearing to Ju-, your June 8th meeting at 7:10 PM, if you would be so kind as to solicit that motion.
Absolutely. I entertain a motion to continue the hearing at 6:08:21 at 7:10 PM.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I have Counselor Columbotus and Counselor George. Counselor Columbotus, anything to add?
No comment.
Counselor George?
All set.
Okay, all those will move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, Licensed Transactions. Petition P. 2021-012, One-Day Entertainment, First Annual Juneteenth Celebration, BCCR in First Parish, UU Church, Stanley Ironworks, Parkland, 6/19, with a rain date of 6/20, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I would ask if the town manager has anything to add.
Nothing to add from my end, other than I think staff has reviewed the request, and we are happy to recommend the granting of the entertainment license.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor George? Anything to add, Counselor Chase?
No, nothing. Thank you.
Anything to add, Counselor George?
Nothing.
Anything from the rest of the council? Counselor Moore?
Yep, I'd just like to say I'm excited to see this move forward. I think it'll be a fun celebration and look forward.
Excellent. Any other councils? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on, Presentations. Our first presentation is going to be an update on the Memorial Building. I'm gonna hand it over to the town manager. I only ask that members of the council save questions and comments till the end of the presentation so that we can get through it at a timely manner. Over to you, Mr. Dutton.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I will introduce Tape Architects. Tape, as the council probably knows, was the firm that did the Academy Building, did a spectacular job there. They also have been engaged to do some renovations to the Memorial Building. I think most counselors also know, we've been planning this for quite some time, had worked fairly closely with an ad hoc committee made up of various stakeholders and committee members from, from a variety of, of committees throughout town. And, and what Cesar and his team have come up with, I think, is accommodates all the concerns that the, the ad hoc committee had, and so we're happy to show you what will be going out to bid shortly after we received, actually, we received a favorable request yesterday, I believe it was, from the Architectural Access Board, which will allow us to retain the double doors, which technically, which the Historic District Commission had urged us to try to do and, which would not otherwise adhere to the architectural, or Architectural Access Regulation. So that's good news. Obviously, the building will be accessible, but I will let Cesar talk a little bit more about that. So with that, I will turn it over to Cesar, who has done tremendous amount of work on this, and, and he can guide you through what we are going to do. So I'll turn it over to Cesar, and I think he will need, he will need to be able to share his screen.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening. My name is Cesar Delios. I'm a principal at Tape Architects. As Michael mentioned, I worked on the Academy Building and now working on the Memorial Building. We're very excited that things are beginning to come together. As he, as Michael mentioned, we're planning to, we're, we're now working on, on the contact documents, working drawings for this project, and hopefully we'll go out to bid soon. I have a presentation that will give you a normal view of what we're proposing to do to this building. So if, let me see, if I could share my screen. Let me know if everybody could say, do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So basically, I don't need to tell you, you're all familiar with this building, but this is, this is the going that was from way back, Washington, till the architects, original architects, 1882. This is what the building was ambitioned as. I hope that technology doesn't fail me. Now, okay, seems to be working. So you can see, that's the building and from that period. This is an image of the building as it appears in the records of Mass Historic around the 1980s. And this is what the building looks like right now. From a distance, it looks in, in, in decent shape. However, there are things that you can see start to show in age, and it needs, needs some work. For example, on the side of the building, there was something done at some point to provide accessibility, handicap accessibility with it. As you can see, and some wood steps were added on top of the existing historic stone steps on the side. As far as fenestration windows, you can see on the slide, on the image on the slide, very ornate type of windows, but they are now, they have a sort of a mishmash of screens that were added over the years. Some have been, has it, some don't. The interior is actually in decent shape. You can see the, the woodwork looks very good. Exception, of course, the floor that needs some work, but the walls look in good shape. Exception, of course, the floor that needs some work, but uh the walls look in good shape, the the interiors, the paneling, the wood doors. Everything looks in decent shape. Uh, the basement. The basement is a utilitarian basement unfinished for the most part, uh with the exception of one room that uh has some plaster on it and but in general is a basement, everything exposed to concrete floors and different levels and a lot of um building equipment like boilers and pumps and things of that nature. What we're proposing to do on this project, uh we, the the purpose of this building is to revitalize it, to bring a new function to it. So uh what we're going to do is uh is to utilize this available space to house the offices, um workspaces for the P W, the department heads, and staff persons on the main floor. That means, of course, upgrading mechanical systems, improved thermal performance of the windows, proper uh facilities, meaning toilet rooms. Uh, we also are proposing to restore the structural integrity to the front entrance step and landing and to provide universal access to the building. Universal access is beyond handicap accessibility to the building. Handicap accessibility is part of it, but universal access means everybody, no matter who you are, you you get to experience the building in the same way. Also establish a venue for the display of historic artifacts. There are some artifacts currently in the uh in the library, the main library, and the idea is to bring them here and to kind of uh combine the the more uh practical functions of an office setting with the historical artifacts for display for uh access to to the people. Uh, also, the basement, as I mentioned, right now is a utilitarian kind of unfinished space. We're going to uh refurbish that to create a storage area in support of departmental functions uh that would be on the lower level. As far as uh E D A compliance, right now, the building is not handicap accessible, the lift no longer functional. Um, the steps in front are crumbling. As I said, from a distance, the building looks in okay shape until you get a closer look and you see that the steps are off, uh the 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 bricks need somebody pointing, uh the windows need repairs, things like that. As far as accessibility, uh there's a parking space currently in in sort of in the back of the building. We will refurbish that to make it the proper size with proper sing signage and and also may create a new connection from that parking in the back towards the front of the building, consistent with this idea of universal access. Again, accessibility from the sidewalk to the main entrance, meaning people coming from the street, approach the building, faces beautiful building, enters through the ways intended, main door. Um, regardless of whether you're ambulatory or you're on a wheelchair or have some uh physical limitations. Right now, the building is on floors. There is no um access to the lower level. We are going to provide access to the lower level via a lift. And we're going to provide proper compliant toilet facilities on the lower level, toilet rooms. Uh, this is a floor plan or with a proposed um changes. As you can see, uh the building, the original building is a a T-shaped configuration with two small rooms and one large main room in the back. And that's what it is right now. As you can see, it's very, very minimal that we are doing to the inside. Basically, we are defining the spaces with the furnishings, defining areas, uh just utilizing furnishings for the most part to to create zones. You can see uh in the middle of the space, this is display case. Uh, that whole area with the stairs and the lift, create create a zone where we are proposing to sort of emphasize the historical aspect of the building by um displaying the artifacts. Uh, this is the lower level as we're proposing. Um, as mentioned, toilet rooms properly properly sized for for uh handicap accessibility. Uh, replacing the existing stair with a new one uh that is uh code compliant and access uh for wheelchair lift. Two thirds of that space is about is for the storage. That uh storage that from the departments uh that ultimately will be processed, digitized, but in the meantime, this is where they're going to be uh as that process continues throughout the town. As far as uh this site, this is uh um you can see it's a very, very tight site in in because right now, when you look at the building and look at the surroundings, uh it appears to be more spacious, but you can see the the property line very tight to the building. Within that, we need to provide all this this new um features. So as I mentioned, uh this is the main entrance to the building. This uh I would call the outdoor vestibule as opposed to more traditional in indoor vestibule. The outdoor vestibule or a foyer is where the um memorial plaques are located. And um so and I'm getting into more detail, but as you can see, you can approach building frontally to new steps or but by this lamp, or if someone comes and parking in the back and in a wheelchair, will have um this link, this um walkway that would allow a person to come and meet sort of this intermediate point and entering the building the same as anyone else. So approach from the street, approach from parking, uh the main formal entrance is the same. Measure and minor changes to the building. We, as I say, we're working on the uh working drawings right now, and that will have the full scope of the proposed changes in in great detail. Uh, but just to give you an idea in general, uh there are two types, minor in nature and major alterations. The major alterations require review and approval of the Massachusetts Massachusetts Historical Commission. As part of the application for um variance, uh one of the conditions was to have this um approval because of the historical nature. And uh so we received a letter from uh Mass Historic saying that the 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 project complies with their uh requirements. So we got the approval from them. In addition, we got the approval from M A A B for the doors, which was a requirement of uh a request from uh the H D C. So as far as approvals for historical uh purposes, I think that we are in in good shape. I'll describe the major changes to the landscape in the front of the building. We're adding, as I mentioned, the slope walk to provide A D A compliant lamps. Uh, we're adding a knee wall adjacent to the existing front wall to balance the opposite side for the symmetry, to maintain the symmetry of the of the building, the facade. And we are removing the existing walkway to the existing front steps and replacing with a new paper entry plaza. So starting with um first item, add the slope walk and A D A compliant lamps. So coming from the street, uh you see uh that frontal approach to the main vestibule of the building can be in in the traditional way, taking the steps or taking this loop here. Uh, someone in 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 a wheelchair could go around and end up at the same entry point to the building, to this um exterior vestibule with the historical, um the the memorial plaques. This is uh to maintain the symmetry and balance of of the composition, we created a planter area and and um low wall that kind of balances out the the facade. Also created a more formal uh entry plaza with concrete papers that are specified as the same concrete papers that we specified for the academy building right across the street. Now, that that was site front entrance, front entrance and side of the building. Uh, the entrance itself to the building, we propose removal of the existing granite steps that I, as I mentioned, they are sort of um crumbling a little bit and leading to the front doors and replacement with a new concrete step with granite treads to to match. What we're going to do while removing this existing granite steps, we're not going to discard them, we're going to repurpose them, we're going to reconfigure them. Uh, we did an inventory of what is there, and we reconfigured them to create the top landing of the the steps. And the also, I I mentioned, we're adding a slope walkway to replace the existing walk. So here, uh you can see we uh providing the new um concrete with granite covered steps, and these are the pieces right here of the existing steps uh in a new composition to create this top landing to the entrance. Uh, we're also uh proposing, as I mentioned, this link from the side, um the sort of the back of the building, where the parking, existing parking space is that we're going to refurbish and 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 bring um a slope walkway that allows someone coming, parking in the back, coming and entering through the front door of the building. Uh, this is a view of the building as we're proposing, as I mentioned, you have the entry paper plaza, the step, the granite steps to you to the wide is the the slope sidewalk combination of lamp leading to the front entrance. Uh, the vegetation balancing the 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 work on the right. Um, and also um the symmetry with with proposing a couple of um small trees that don't obscure the facade, but also reinforce that symmetrical composition. Um, these are um preliminary renderings uh that give you a better idea from the side view where standing on sort of the library side. This view is looking towards in the opposite direction. Now, uh that was the exterior. Uh, the interior of the building, uh as I mentioned, uh the physical interventions, they did sort of new walls, things happen mostly at the lower level. Uh, first floor, we're trying to define the spaces with furnishings. Um, the only elements that we're adding are the vertical circulation. So we're creating a floor opening and installing a wheelchair lift, and we are removing and replacing of the new stair to the lower floor with a code compliant stair in a new configuration and a slightly larger opening. Right now, the existing stair is not compliant, it's too steep, doesn't have the proper headroom. Um, so we're going to rectify that. Uh, you can see um this part plan shows the stair on the left and the lift on the right. Um, one, as we met with the Historic District Commission, and we discussed these issues about interventions inside the building. Uh, the main goal was to be um very subtle with the interventions, very discreet, uh so that it doesn't deter from the building architecture. And this image here gives you an idea of how minimalist this approach is. You can still experience the entire the main room with the the windows and um it just opens it up and the the lift is relatively low, small. Uh, as I mentioned before, we were using what we're going to incorporate is historical artifacts, bring them into this space to to kind of reinforce the idea of what the purpose of this building was historically. And also um acting in this case as a divider, as a buffer, so uh between the more open space in the foreground and the office spaces in the background. This is a view looking in the other direction. You can see the the lift. Now, the lower level, um the vertical circulation lands to sort of at the same spot, either you you take the stair or take the lift. So that um it was important to maintain this visual connection from floor to floor. Um, so that someone taking the the lift uh wouldn't feel isolated or something. So that is what what this image shows, the the relationship between the lift and the stair and sort of the space at the at the bottom, the landing face to face. Uh, we're also proposing some minor changes, uh paving, striping and signage associated with making the A D A compliant parking space that I mentioned. Remove the existing wooden deck and the lift, repair and structurally stabilize the side stair and landing. So we're basically moving what is there that was add up done done at a time just to 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 protect, I guess, but uh the this the existing steps, the original steps are immediately below, and we're going to refurbish that and bring them back to their original state. Additional additional of a removable entry grill in the interior entry out, exterior entry out called, uh this is something that we're proposing to do so that uh currently um there's a step from the exterior vestibule up to the interior vestibule to the building, about six inches. And that is, that area has the existing um pavers that although very worn, I think we we feel they are significant to maintain with when I cover them with concrete or something. Uh, so they're going to remain visible and we will, we're proposing um very light entry grill, not diff not very, I mean, you you see this in any 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 building when you enter in a vestibule. Uh, you see a metal grill. That's what this would be. It it creates uh it provides functionality to maintain the level with the interior of the building floor, but also allows for transparency so that you can still see the pavers below. Um, another minor change, uh we will be painting the exterior um interior surfaces, and we will be repairing and improvements to the electrical power distribution, lighting systems. This image shows you what I was describing before. The steps, you can see the stone steps down below this deck. We're going to get rid of this deck and stabilize and and repair the existing steps, original. You can see in this image right here. And I was describing this grill here in at the front. Basically, uh right now, to maintain all at flush or at the same level, we end up at this landing, then you go over this grill, which is the traditional sort of uh a surface that you see in entrance. Uh, but it's elevated so that it matches the threshold of the building and the pavers you can see below it. Additional minor changes, installation of removable floor covering that's inside in a walk of mat. Removal and replacement of the lower level partitions in new configurations. We're using and repurposing the existing HVAC plumbing, electrical systems, components supplemented with new equipment as required. So there's, there's some good equipment there and our engineers visited this, this building, took notes and decided that some of them, there was no need to 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 remove and replace. So we're trying to use everything that we can that is code compliant. We're trying to maintain and we're getting rid of things that are obsolete, of course. Things like the boiler room, I'm sorry, the boiler, the boiler is completely obsolete, it's not used. Because they are split units right now. So we are using the split unit for HVAC and eliminating the boiler. Lighting, there's some good chandeliers and lighting that we are keeping. And where we need more power or we need more lighting, we are adding that and adding the necessary electrical panels. But as I said, for the most part, trying to maintain what is there. The windows to improve the thermal performance of the building, we are adding an energy panel, same strategy that we applied successfully in the Academy building. By putting a storm on the outside, we can refurbish the existing windows, the historical windows, and then protect them with the with the panel. So it improves thermal performance and it provides an additional layer of first line of defense for for the historical windows. In addition, we'll do some additional insulation in the attic and things of that nature. And so this is image shows you how we will unify the the windows with a type as we did in the Academy building after we'll refurbish the existing windows. And so that is what we're proposing to do. As I said, we we have, we heard good news from the different entities that had a say on the historical portion restoration of the building. We are well advanced on the construction documents. We and so we're very excited that we are on a good trajectory for this project.
Thank you. Thank you very much tonight for coming in. We appreciate that as the council hearing an update and a presentation. Before I just take any comments, wondering if there's anything that the town manager wants to add to that presentation that would be helpful to this?
I don't think so, Mr. President. I think Cesar sort of spelled it out quite thoroughly. So we're, as he mentioned, we're excited and ready to go. We do, the next step is once the construction documents are complete, then we can go out to bid and and hopefully we will time that process so that construction costs are going to come down after being at historic highs. But we are, we are ready to plow full steam ahead.
Excellent. With that, I'd open it up to the council members. If anybody has any questions, comments, I see Councilor Colum Bautis. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cesar, do we have a rough budget estimate as overall budget estimate for this project?
Yes, we did. We had an estimate. Michael, you would like to speak to the budget?
We do have a budget estimate. I don't have it pulled up, but I can pull it up. It believe was about a million two.
Yeah, that's why, that's my recollection when we did the estimate is closer to 1.3 million. That was the estimate that we had.
So And what we're
Construction, construction cost, that's it. It's not the project cost.
Doesn't include soft costs. Right. And what, what sources of revenue? I I'm wondering if we can't use a green community as a green member of the green communities, as a green community member, we're eligible for a special round of funding to address energy improvements in town. Is that under consideration for funding the project, funding some of the energy improvements?
That, that actually is a great question. We had some of the mini splits, which current currently, well, all of the mini splits, which currently heat and cool the building were done as part of a Green Communities grant a couple of few years ago. So we've, we have taken advantage of that and have, you know, got that done so that we don't have to pay for that again or replicate that. In terms of possibly doing some of the window restoration or the storm window, Green Communities may very well be a possible grant resource for us, but just in general, so that the council knows. We have appropriated roughly $700,000, which dates back to the voter approval of the Academy building. And if folks remember, councillors remember that were there at the time, we had three projects that we we asked voters to approve a debt exclusion for in one vote. One of those projects was the fire station roof, which just needed to be replaced so that we could get a few more years out of that. One was the memorial building and then obviously the largest one was the Academy building. So we have about $700,000 there. And then we also have gotten some councils appropriated and the CPC is, has recommended some money out of CPC. And the CPC does know that we will have to come back to them at some point, once we get the final revised final cost and then, and then the some capital funds out of both water and sewer were allocated to this project as well. Because it's going to serve at least for the, for the next few years and still the offices for the DPW water sewer. So we have, have funding sources, the council's appropriated so far, and we will see what balance we need to appropriate, hopefully not too much.
Additionally, do this, do the specs specify replacement of the boiler, which is that, is the current boiler fueled by natural gas or oil?
I'll defer to Cesar on that one. Believe, I believe that's natural gas, but I'll defer to Cesar.
Yeah, I, I believe it is, but we're not, we're not replacing the boiler. We are using the split, the boiler is not being used right now. The boiler became obsolete and I believe maybe disconnected. It's just sitting here once the split units were installed.
So you're assuming heat pumps will heat the building?
Yes, that's what we, what we have.
All right. And did I notice that, are you removing partition walls in the front of the basement? I noticed now, but when you come down the stairs, there's, you come into one room and then there's a partition wall. It seemed like in the, one of the plans, the footprint showed that the partition walls were removed in the basement. Are you opening up that front section of the basement?
Yes, the, the whole basement is like carefully configured. We're opening everything up. Yes.
So you'll need some structural beams in the basement to carry the load from
Ah, yes, yes, they are. We have provisions, our social engineer was there. See, most of the load is carried by columns and beams, but there are no, I don't believe they are low bearing walls, but in any case, our engineer looked at this and he has the proper framing for this floor.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, Council Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi Caesar, thank you for the presentation. It was very, very good. Just a question on, so I maybe Councilor Conabos commented or went to the effect of with the existing HVAC system, I know we were talking about putting historical items from the town documents. And I know it talks about this building a couple of years ago. There was discussion about climate control, the moisture control situations for these historical items. Is reworking the existing HVAC going to be sufficient for the historical items or or not? Could you give me some more detail on that?
They, you mean the, the historical items on the first floor?
Right, I believe that's been the original discussion on putting about historical items from the town in this building after being reworked. But again, the, I'm not sure if the HVAC system was sufficient enough to support preservation of these items. Are you saying that the current HVAC system can be reworked to do that? Or would a better system need to be installed for these historical items?
No, I think that the existing building, I'm sorry, the existing system, which is is designed for the occupants and the artifacts will be distributed throughout the space. So we don't have a special separate location. Having said that, it is the, the, I believe the building, this artifact are currently in the existing library. I correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but I don't believe that they are in the particular climate control room.
No, I, I think, Cesar, I think Councilor Perry's were probably referring to the lower level and storage of town documents. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, councillor, but, but I think that's what you're referring to. So that the lower level right now is designed to be sort of a storage for, for, I won't call them historic documents, I'll call them town documents, you know, building office files, you know, health office files, conservation office files. And it's really designed as well to be sort of a waystation between permanent storage for those items that we have to keep in paper form. And then the digitizing process so that when, when we have paper documents that need to be saved, those are all digitized, accessible online for anybody that wants to see them. And then eventually either, either destroyed or, or, or preserved for the number of years that record retention requires. So, so that's, that's what that design is for. So and I think to, to reiterate what Cesar had said, the existing, the existing, currently existing HVAC is, is perfectly adequate for, for those purposes.
Okay, great. Thank you, town manager. So in addition to that, and just to extend, we are going to be doing the digitizing of documents in that lower level of the building. Once it's done, is that the plan?
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. And then just secondarily to Caesar, so I'm just looking at the plans of your, of your ramps in the front. So based on your heights and elevations, you don't have enough rise and run in the front to just extend one ramp right to the sidewalk? You have to do that additional ramp across the front there?
Yeah, it's it's a, yeah, we, we did try very hard to, this is, this is a very tight site. And frankly, when we, the town actually did the survey for us. It, it, it's very, very tight when we got the survey and look at the actual grade differential. Sometimes deceiving when you look at something and when you get actually measured dimensions. It's a substantial grade differential. So we managed to squeeze the, the we, we made it the level, we made the level, but we don't have a lot of external, unfortunately.
And just in essential that, do we need to have access both front and back? Or can we just suffice with the access to the back where the parking would be?
Not to, to enter, the access that the parking is in the back, there is a ramp or a slope walkway that allows someone who parks in the back to move towards the front to enter the building. I think that one of the things that was mentioned several times is the significance of this entry point. It's not just the entry point to the building is is the, so the purpose of, but what is the purpose of the building as a memorial? It has the memorial plaques and we were talking about, well, what if on a weekend, the, the building itself is closed, but someone wants to visit and enters through and gathering that in this space with these plaques, doesn't need to enter the building. That's why it was important that no matter where you approach the building from, you enter the building from the front entrance. So no, this entrance, the, the side is secondary, is egres only. A person parking in here will take a step, I'm sorry, in a step, would take a slope walkway towards the front. Let me just show you what right here. So as I said, it is extremely important as we, that we consider the front entrance the main entry to this building for everybody. So the parking back here will be parking for with handicap spot who have a curb cut. And that would allow someone to move up the walkway and enter in this way.
Okay. And then Caesar, is there room for a sidewalk besides that ramp or just the property line not allow for that?
No, it's, we are building right at the property line. There's no
Okay. So I was just thinking if there was a sidewalk that could cut to the back of that ramp, we might not need all the extra ramps in the front. But if there's no sidewalk, you know, entrance to that back part of the ramp, then I can understand why.
Right, it is, I say, this is a very compact, everything is very compact here because of the site. As I say, when, once you go there and you see there is no, you're not, you're not against a physical, like a building next to you, but because it's open space. However, it's not town property, so we have to restrict our work to those areas.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Council Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Cesar, if I may, I just had a quick question with respect to the, the building. I had an opportunity last spring to tour the facility and I was rather impressed with the condition. It, it, it certainly for his age appeared to have remained in, in quite good repair. But I did have a question about the roof. I'm wondering if I'm sure you've examined the roof or given thought to the condition of the roof. Does that cause any, any particular concern? I don't know if there's been any evidence of, of leaking in the past or of poor drainage from the roof as to, you know, downspouts and whatnot. Can you just comment briefly about that?
Yeah, the existing roof is slate. It appears that a few missing tiles, probably a big storm, probably dislodge a few. So we have provisions, we will include provisions in the documents to replace where they are missing. Which is only a handful. Everything else, as you know, slate roof is very durable. I believe also there is one downspout that may be missing. So I believe it's in, in this area over here. So we will have provisions to, to fix that too. Beyond that, I am not aware of any active leaks or, or any, anything in the in the immediate past.
Very good. I thank you.
Thank you. Council Gallagher?
See, thank you, Mr. President. And I was going to ask about the roof, so I'm glad that was, that was cleared up. Just to reiterate, Caesar, in the basement, are you concerned or was there any evidence of mold or any water damage in the basement? And that you're satisfied that the current HVAC system can handle, you're keeping that controlled and there's, there's no evidence of any water damage going into the basement? Did you, is that true?
We, we actually had It it, we, we actually had um, uh, geotechnical engineer do a report, uh, they did some. Uh, test pings and borings and and they didn't find water nearby i- in the in those uh in that report. And that is reflective basically of the condition of the basement, it uh seems very dry. Uh, in, and we do have provisions for the basement to have, um. Um, we will be uh flooring the wall, so you don't see the exposed uh foundation, we will. Pour out the walls, add some insulation and add uh damp proofing, just as a measure of, and plus. The vapor valve at the floor, so we are adding, um. We would would have provisions in place to mitigate any potential of moisture. But in general, the geotech report indicated that there was no, no water present uh. Near the 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 basement level.
That's good news, because with with a town named Bridgewater, you always worry about whether there's water around. Um, so thank you for that and thank you for you, thank you for the update, uh, this has been a long. Uh, process to to get to this point and I'm glad to see we have some um, uh, you know, diagrams and. And we can see what needs to be done and hopefully we'll get the RFP out soon and we can get this moving along, so thank you.
Thank you, any other councillors? Councillor Moore?
Sorry, uh, thank you, Caesar, just a a quick question, first off, great presentation, it's exciting to. At the beginning, you mentioned that the front entryway, you were going for universal design, I think instead of accessible design. Um, I was wondering if you could describe the difference between those two, uh, or more specifically, what is universal design? Universal access?
Yeah, universal access refers, uh, well, just to contrast, um, the more. Traditional way that people or the way people used to talk about accessibility is. Providing handicap accessibility, uh. Or a wheelchair accessibility, we see universal design as. A way in in which no matter your condition is. Either you're ambulatory or you are disabled or you're temporarily disabled. Uh, it doesn't mean that someone is permanently disabled, uh, ten temporary, you. Uh, you twisted an ankle and you need to, um, you're on a wheelchair for the for a few weeks or. Or even people, um, um, families with children and pushing strollers. There are a variety of um situations there where steps to a building are not adequate or. Too much effort, so having a ramp on the side is very appropriate, very convenient. And what is important is that no matter how you approach the building is uh. Is the same experience for all, that's why from the very beginning, we thought that trying to do something to. To the lift that was in the back and in this area was not appropriate because it segregated people from. If you're an ambulatory, you take the front entrance, if you're in a wheelchair, you need to ask somebody to give you the keys to the lift. To get in the back door, that was not adequate, so this plan reflects. Um, universal um access to the building, that that that's that's what we. Now I explain it.
Yeah, I know, it's great, so I think my takeaway is you're you're trying to give everyone the same experience in the building, right? It's great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor George.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, Caesar, e- excellent presentation, I appreciate it. So a lot of things I was going to bring up have already been covered, but there was one thing that I noticed, if you can bring up the front entrance. I believe that you have pavers that are leading up to the main entrance, the only thing I would. Caution is we're running into a problem at the Academy Building with the side pavers heaving, um. Which causes a potential safety risk, so we have pavers that are uneven leading up to the landing, so. Um, that would just be something that, I don't know if there's anything to add to that that would keep us from. Having to constantly redo the pavers to make sure that they're level and we don't have a, don't have a tripping issue, so I just, I just bring that up for. Future considerations.
No, thanks for bringing it up, I um, will, I'll discuss that with the landscape architect and and see. Um, what they propose, probably they they'll change the. They they may specify a different type of bedding for the pavers. That is uh stiffer and it doesn't move as much in with the change in uh in the seasons.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councillor Wood.
Thank you, uh, thank you for the great presentation, um, it's very informative and it's uh. It's much better, uh, much better approach than what I saw a couple of years ago, and I really like this approach. Um, I'm glad you're on this frame because this is where my question is, so uh historically, there was a lot of discussion in the past about the front doors. Um, being able to, I think, close the front doors and see um pieces of of the stonework or or something along those lines. Um, so how does your entranceway there um solve that problem and and is that door? An automated door for for those with the universal access or or is it all manual?
You mean the the main, this main entrance?
Yes.
Yeah, um, as as you can see that this uh. Still shows the a a single leaf, but uh the hearing for M A B was yesterday, so we just found out yesterday. That we are, we can keep the two doors, and I'm I'm sorry, I I I omitted mentioning that, so we. Um, apply for a variance to M A B for a a non-compliant pair of doors. Right now, the opening is about five feet wide with two thirty inch leaves. Uh, the code for accessibility requires that at least one of them needs to be thirty six inches wide. Or the full opening needs to be in excess of thirty six inches wide. So we applied for a variance and we applied for an alternative compliance, which is um. Uh, an operator, an ele- an electrical operator, just like you push the button. And instead of opening one of the doors, it will open the two of them together for the full width of the opening. Five foot, that makes it accessible. So is the push button for the the operate, the door operator from the inside and from the outside. And that makes it compliant, so it is, the variance is. Not to not make it compliant, is to provide an a- alternative method of compliance.
Councillor Wood, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, welcome, councillor Colin Bodis, do you have any follow up?
Yeah, I perhaps my question would be better addressed to the town manager, um. I'm concerned about use of the of the fact that we're using this building for departmental operations. Where this building was originally, you know. Designed and created as a as a war memorial and a and a library and um. I I believe we've applied for and and received some funding based on that use and now it seems like we're changing use to. To a departmental function and I wonder, um, I've had discussions with the town manager before and that. That this use of the building for apartment function is seen as temporary, I'm wondering what the. The the long-term plan is for perhaps relocation of that departmental function.
I think that's a good question and we do anticipate, so I've I've mentioned, we anticipate having to use this for departmental function. Uh, just by virtue of the fact that that uh we don't, we don't have, you know, the appropriate space right now. Um, when we uh. When we get through the the capital plan and we get to the point where we are uh improving and expanding the. Uh, what everybody refers to as the highway garage, um, at that point, uh, we will very likely build into. Uh, that project, uh, appropriate space for the DPW, so so for the time being. This will be used by DPW director, facilities, um, water and sewer office, um. And uh, and will be, you know, an appropriate place for the public to visit those offices, um, until we can, we can. Have a more uh, more robust uh resolution and and fix to the highway garage and make it. A publicly accessible area as well, a more appropriately publicly accessible area.
So i- is there provision in your, the the current iteration of your.
Councillor, councillor Colin Bodis, can we just stick to the actual intent of tonight's meeting and maybe we push that conversation down the road? I think we're getting off track here and it's not um fair to Caesar. Uh, councillor Perry, thank you, councillor Perry?
That's fine, it was kind of an offshoot of what councillor Colin Bodis was talking about, so we'll save that for another time.
Appreciate that, uh, Caesar, um, incredible work on this project and um. Certainly had many, many conversations about lifts and um access to the building, which is obviously critical, I think the most important is. That uh, culminating a couple of years of work, we're able to preserve a beautiful building downtown, although it might not be ideal use. Currently, it is, um, you know, really motivating us to invest in this building, that's really what's most important. I just have one comment, when we talk about universal a- universal access and I I look at the depth of the sidewalk in front of that building. Uh, you don't have to respond, but just take into consideration maybe handicap access ramp in that location or a slight indent in the curb cut. Um, typically vehicles are parked out on South Street um for access to that building in the past or even to the Academy Building. But I think it might be helpful if we could indent, get that traffic a little off of South Street and maybe put a ramp in. Uh, for exactly that point, that front ramp and having universal access for everyone. So I would just say thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate your time and it was a fantastic presentation tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, presentations, fire station headquarters update, I will leave it to the town manager for an introduction.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Brian Hume, uh, Humes is the architect that uh, that we have engaged to. Begin uh and and complete the feasibility study on the fire station. Um, and I just thought it would be useful to bring Brian in and give the council an update about uh, about where we stand right now. Uh, obviously, uh, we're nowhere uh near as advanced in our planning efforts as we are with the uh memorial building, so. Uh, Brian shouldn't feel uh compelled to uh give a as thorough a presentation, but I will. Uh, turn it over to Brian, he's got uh, uh, years of experience designing police, fire stations, public buildings. Um, and uh, and was selected by the Fire Station Building Committee to uh, to proceed through the feasibility. Uh, phase uh for us, so I will turn it over to Brian and he can give you a little bit of an update on what he's doing. And uh, potential locations and uh, and where he stands right now, so Brian.
Thank you and good evening, uh, thank you to the town manager, thank you, uh, Mr. President and councillors for. Allowing me the opportunity to give you an update on what we've been doing in Bridgewater. Um, we were brought on board by Bridgewater in July of twenty twenty. And we responded to an RFP that was a fire study to determine. The relocation and design of Station One, which is your downtown headquarters station. I think everybody understands the need for a new headquarters station. The uh current facility has not been working effectively or efficiently for the fire department for s- many years. Uh, this site has a higher and best use and our experience uh working in the public safety sector. I think was the determining factor in the town of Bridgewater and the Bridgewater Fire Department Building Committee. Bringing us on board to do this study, um. The study is just that, it's a study, we're not hired to do any final design. And we're not doing any construction documents, uh, the only funding that's been in place is to to do this study and and complete this study. So since July of twenty twenty, we have been working with the fire department personnel and the. Uh, fire department building committee on a four-phase task. The four phases were very specific in our agreement and the building committee requires. We require the building committee's approval to go from one phase of the project to the next phase of the project, and there are four phases. The first phase was a space needs assessment. What the space needs assessment does is it defines the program needs of the fire department. It talks about twenty-year growth potential for Bridgewater and the Bridgewater fire personnel. And Bridgewater fire apparatus, so we're just, we're looking at the fire department kind of a global way. To say what are the needs of fire service within Bridgewater for the next twenty years and. That can't be done just by us in a vacuum, uh, we did initiate the fire department staff, the chief deputy chief. Uh, administrative staff uh at the fire department, we engaged them in a lot of conversations back and forth. And the goal in this space needs assessment was for the fire personnel to describe what the needs are. Try to eliminate the wants, the nice to haves, the uh, you know, the the, the sugar on top, but really. Get down to what the needs of the department are as far as space. I would ask the questions about space, they would define the spaces that they said were needed. And then I would apply a square footage estimate onto that need. Uh, we started in August of twenty twenty, going through many iterations of this space needs assessment. We went back and forth with the document uh five times to try to further define and get down to the basic needs of the department. And in September of twenty twenty, we uh concluded the space needs assessment. Presented that to the building committee and they uh endorsed the document to go to the second phase. Of our assignment and that was site evaluation. We have completed a site evaluation and the third phase. And I'll get back to the site evaluation i- in a little bit more detail, but that leads to a third phase, which is schematic design. And a fourth phase, which is a professional cost estimate. So all of those phases, when we're done with this study, would give you what are the needs? Where's the site? What's the building going to look like as far as a schematic design and site plan? And how much is it going to cost? We are only about halfway through that study, so we have completed the space needs assessment, as I said, in September of twenty twenty. And after September of twenty twenty, the building committee then initiated. A lengthy evaluation of available sites within the town of Bridgewater. They boiled down a long list of town-owned property and the town also issued an RFP. For private citizens to respond to if there are any private uh land available for purchase. Or if any private landowner was wanting to offer land for the purposes of a fire station. An interesting thing occurred while we were doing the space needs assessment. And we we go into these projects with no preconceived notion as to what the outcome would be. But in conversations with the fire department, executive staff and administration. Whenever we were talking about needs, it was always discussed of moving headquarters to another location in town. Where that location was had not yet been determined, but we were just talking generically about moving the headquarters to another location. Within the town of Bridgewater. You know there's Station Two on the east side of town and that's the Pratt Town section of of Bridgewater, so Station Two covers the east side of town. Headquarters right now is located in your central business district and that handles the rest of the town. But moving headquarters became an interesting conversation about the twenty-year fire service requirements with the town. And a lot of emphasis was placed on the west side of town, needing additional coverage and fire response on the west side of town. Not knowing where headquarters may be located, there was always an emphasis that the west side of town is an underserved. Area for fire service, so on the west side or Scott. So on the west side or Scotland region, the fire department staff were very concerned with a, with a lack of coverage on the west side. So we expanded our space needs assessment to say wherever headquarters goes, there should also be a west side presence for fire apparatus, no matter where headquarters is located. So we expanded our space needs assessment for the possibility of a headquarters and what are the requirements of headquarters? Cause that has some additional administrative requirements. That's where the majority of apparatus would be stored. But also look at the potential for a third location being a substation on the west side of town. And we are now calling this Station Three. For the purposes of the space needs assessment, it was defined what headquarters needs and what Station Three West Side Station would need. But remember, we have not looked at sites yet. So this was just a generic attempt to say, how is the, the town of Bridgewater going to be best served in the next 20 years? With that data, we also went back to the building committee and said that the headquarters station would need two and a half acre site. And on the west side of town, if you could find a suitable site of one and a half acres on the west side of town, that would fulfill the requirements of Station Three or the Scotland area station. So that was the task that we went back to the building committee with to look at available sites. In the early part of the year, the building committee assigned us three sites for further evaluation. Uh, one site was 106 Hale Street. It was a central business district location. Another was Crescent Street, where the softball fields are on Crescent Street. And a third location at 1185 Pleasant Street of Route 104, just adjacent to the Eversource Substation. If you're familiar with the Eversource Substation out on 104. The fire department within their space needs assessment, in addition to saying they want a west side presence, they were also saying they need a central business district presence in some sort. They, they wanted a quick response to the central business district because of the concentration of businesses there. Also, Bridgewater State University needs response for their campus. And the fire department provides that through a central business district location. So we've talked about Station Two satisfying the east side. Potential for Station Three being on the west side or the Scotland region and a location that services the central business district. So with that, we applied the three sites as possible solutions for, for meeting those criteria. And in April of 2021, we presented our site assessments back to the building committee. We were scoring the sites as far as their potential to meet the space needs assessments. And just as a quick summary, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I'm just trying to hit the high points and I can be happy to answer questions later. But we ranked the, the sites and gave them a score. The Pleasant Street site has nine acres. It has some wetlands. There, there's excellent location and excellent visibility. We scored that site a 94 out of 100. The Crescent Street site had some challenges with accessibility to the site, adequate land area to, to place a substation or headquarters on that site. The existing softball fields and playgrounds that potentially would be impacted. So we scored that a 78 out of 100. And the Hale Streets site, the Hale Street site is not a town owned site, but the Hale Street site was a response to the town's RFP as an available site, which is currently owned by Bridgewater State University. The caveat on the Hale Street site was the Bridgewater State University would be interested in sharing that site for campus police program space in addition to a fire department substation. When you combine the size of the site, the desire for Bridgewater State University to use it for public safety, the overall dimensions of the site, while it did meet the criteria of being toward the central business district, we scored that site a 73 out of 100. So we had three sites, a score of 73, 78 and 94. You can see that the Pleasant Street site really rose to the top of the list. It seemed to satisfy the west side criteria. Uh, but it did not adequately provide a central business district site uh, for a substation within the central business district. Within that site assessment, we, we showed our assessments to the building committee. And they have authorized us to proceed with the Pleasant Street site for the schematic design of a headquarters facility. Some other discussions have also taken place as to any potential central business district site that could support a substation. And, or do we put all the apparatus out at the Pleasant Street site? And the Pleasant Street site, we are, as I said, currently in schematic design for a headquarters to move all of the apparatus from this, the central business district, Station One, move it all to the Pleasant Street site. And for, for today's purpose, to forego any design of any future substation until further review and study is being done. So the Pleasant Street site, we are under design to handle all of the existing and planned apparatus and relocation of staff to the Pleasant Street site. I have some diagrams that I produced and I, I don't know, Mr. President, if you want me to just answer questions or go into any more detail about any more sites that were located or discussed in diagrams that I might have.
Brian, uh, thank you very much for, uh, that informative presentation. I would say that if you have anything to share, I think it would be helpful to the citizens that are, that are listening tonight as, as well as the entire council. So if we could, Anne, would you be able to facilitate that?
I think she did.
Awesome.
Okay. So are you seeing the, uh?
Yes.
My site? Okay. These are diagrams that we just put together to try to further describe the response for the fire areas within Bridgewater. You can see the, the area of Bridgewater is, is outlined there in the red outline. And this is your existing conditions. You, you're satisfying fire response throughout the majority of the town from your downtown headquarters location. While Station Two is handling the east side all the way over to the eastern border and it has access going south. Uh, but you really don't need a lot of response other than assistance from Station Two into the headquarters. So this, this is how the fire personnel were saying how west side is really not well served from this location, but there is access south and, and because the central business district is primarily in the northern quadrant of the town. You know, access to the north is, is easily served from, from the central business district. So this is one scenario that, that we're trying to improve upon. If we looked at the potential for the headquarters to move to the Pleasant Street site, this gives the west side presence that the, that the fire personnel were requesting. Headquarters would move to Pleasant Street. Station Two would continue to serve the east side. And then this is the potential for Hale Street. Uh, Hale Street would serve as that downtown location as a substation. But because of the dimensions of the site, as I mentioned earlier, the dimensions of the site were, were not adequate to, to really support this as a viable site. And we didn't feel that Hale Street was the right solution. But it does give you the, what, what Hale Street would solve. If we looked at the Crescent Street site, still looking at headquarters moving to Pleasant, Crescent Street would give you a close proximity to the central business district. It would give you some access to the south, uh, and then the north, it would be easily accessed. But the Crescent Street site had some downfalls because of available land. Uh, it's a large parcel as far as acreage, but it also has some wetlands, has some challenges. And it has some well established ball fields and playgrounds that we felt if, if available land needed to be taken for a fire substations, it would potentially impact playgrounds that are established or ball fields. Traffic configurations getting in and out of Crescent Street were not favorable. There were, were traffic signals. One of the potentials that was a positive here is it moves the fire substation closer to the police station. So there was some, uh, uh, police and fire synergies that could, can happen from that. We took another look at what would be a preferred site and still focusing on Pleasant Street as the headquarters. Station Two is established. But if we were to place a, a dart and, and throw a dart and say, this is your best location, it seemed to be Bedford Street, somewhere along Bedford Street would be the best solution for a substation. Uh, it would give you a downtown presence. It would also satisfy the north, south, uh, response times, getting down to the correctional center and have easy access in north to the central business district and easy access south toward the correctional center. So this really gives the better of all worlds. We don't, they don't want to put a lot of apparatus in the downtown area, but the downtown area, they do want to place the aerial truck in the central business district. The aerial truck wants closer proximity to these Bridgewater State University and closer proximity to your taller buildings in the downtown area. So it was primarily the aerial, uh, vehicle and staff that they would have supported off of the Bedford Street location. But we haven't talked about any Bedford Street location, but we did look at the potential for utilizing Legion Field as a Bedford Street location. And this was not brought up by the building committee. This was something that we, we brought up and brought it to their attention. Obviously, if we're talking about ball fields in Bridgewater, this is a topic that is taken seriously. So it's not an attempt to eliminate fields. It's actually an attempt to improve the conditions at Legion Field and possibly satisfy a potential future substation for the fire station. You see the fields that we have a football field and you have five established ball fields. You have a small parking area. You have a couple basketball courts. And then you have a field area between the basketball courts and the, the football field. So just as a potential, we were, we were looking at utilizing this in a way that could improve the Legion fields by adding a ball field, going from five fields to six fields. Improve the parking along Bedford Street. So you can have expanded parking. And then to the north side of the site, relocate a basketball court, uh, close proximity to parking and place a fire station, substation at the north side of the site. And for diagrammatic purposes, that fire station that we're showing there is Station Two on your east side station. So we've just utilized your, your Pratt Town station as a diagram on how it would fit on the Legion Field. So this obviously generated more conversations between the, the committees. They, they thought there was, uh, points here for further discussion. The fire personnel and the fire department, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I think I can convey that they were very supportive of a Bedford Street location as being a viable site, whether it's this site on Bedford Street or anything along Bedford Street. In addition to the Pleasant Street and the, the east side station, seemed to really hit the, uh, the high points of what their, their concerns would be in the next 20 years. And if you're talking next 20 years, you're really talking next 50 years. Uh, this isn't just a 20 year solution. We see this more as a 50 year solution. And then apparatus would be conveniently located throughout town. The vehicles in the locations that they want the vehicles and the apparatus where they want the apparatus within the, the community for, for response times and insurance purposes. So there's been no further action on my part on Legion Field other than it, it generated interest. Uh, but we're concentrating right now on the Pleasant Street site, uh, only. As I said, we, we're in the schematic design. We should have something to present in June, back to the committee. And if that is satisfactory, then the final solution would also have a professional cost estimate done. So you'd have a final package, which is a typical pre-refereendum package that we satisfy our clients with and gives them everything they need for a, a package that they could then present to the voters.
Yes, I'll raise my hand.
Brian, Brian, do you have anything else?
No, other than that, I, Mr. President, you're aware of what we have. So if there's anything else I can present that I haven't shown and I'm happy to do that.
No, excellent. Thank you very much. Um, what I'll do is now open it up to counselors. I see Counselor Gallagher with his hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for the presentation. Uh, certainly looking forward to, to something coming forward as we all do agree that, that the fire station needs a new station. The, the clarification on the Legion Field proposal, that would be a substation or a possible main station?
Only a substitution.
Only a substation.
Yeah, the, the space needs requirements of the headquarters is a building that's about 23,490 square feet. Uh, that's what headquarters is requiring. The substation is a building of 14,5850 square feet. So it's much smaller than the headquarters. Uh, and we don't see a solution that's going to support a headquarters within your central business district.
And as far as population goes, if, you know, looking at the, at the map where Pleasant, the Pleasant Street location is for a main station. I mean, that, I mean, that slide there, it looks, it looks pretty west of the town, but it really, it really is, it's, it would be nice if there was some sort of compromise between the center and, and, and that Pleasant Street, but have you taken a look at the distance between West Bridgewater's fire station and Rainham's fire station to the proximity of a main Bridgewater station at the Pleasant Street location? Or are they, are they not, you know, time wise sufficient enough to respond?
Yeah, the initial response would be coming from Bridgewater. So your initial response would have to be a Bridgewater location. They would often, the neighboring towns would offer mutual aid if Bridgewater requests it. But anything within Bridgewater would have to come from a Bridgewater facility as an initial response.
I mean, if, if the studies show that that's where a main station should be, that's fine, but I, I agree that there's going to need to be some sort of presence near the center of town. I agree. But thank you. I'll put my hand down.
Counsel Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, maybe just a quick clarification on the visuals. I want to make sure I understand the arrows and why you're stopping them, where you're stopping them. Could you just explain the decision about how long an arrow is? Is that the time it takes to get, you know, to a destination? Maybe just help me understand the visual a little bit.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked the question and, and I, I should explain that a little further. The arrows are not scientific. You know, the arrows are not, uh, there are companies that are out there that calculate response times and distance of travel. What the arrows are trying to represent is directions of travel uh, through main thoroughfares from each location. The arrows could extend further. But the, but they're not representing response times in any calculated manner. It's just direction of travel.
Okay. Yeah. If, if there is a version at some point that incorporates the response times, it helps us sort of understand how this actually provides coverage. Uh, I think that would be helpful in addition to the, the direction. So thank you. And maybe the second question, back to the Legion Field earlier. So thank you. Maybe the second question, back to the Legion Field earlier. Some scoring was done on the existing three sites. I'd be curious if any scoring was done on the Legion Field site. And if so, you know, how, how does that score relative to the other locations?
We did not go through an entire assessment on the Legion Field site because our task. That we were given by the town were the three sites, the Hale Street, Crescent Street and Pleasant Street. It was only our review that we brought this to their attention as a possible fourth site. Now, we have not been authorized to do any further site evaluation other than it's now entered the conversation. But we have not gone through any analysis like we've done on the other three sites.
Thanks. And then my last question quickly, I, I know there is a school there. So I would just be curious, in the scoring criteria, you know, I'm wondering if there's an interruption that's created by. Sort of the, the fire traffic being so closely located to one of our, our town's largest schools. Is that, is that part of the consideration, the proximity to the school?
I think there was discussion about your elementary school under construction. Further south on Bedford.
The white building right there, the Williams Intermediate.
The intermediate school.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That has most of its traffic coming off of South Street. Where the fire apparatus would be coming out to Bedford Street at this location. So it's not, doesn't seem to be impacted by the intermediate school. It's, they did talk about bus traffic on Bedford Street for the elementary school.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Chase. Counsel Chase, you're still muted.
Thank you. Mr. Humes, I just had a question with respect to the Pleasant Street proposal. If I heard correctly, I, I think you identified that as eleven eighty-five Pleasant Street. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And looking at, at the Google map image of that address. It reminds me that that is very close to the, to the Elm Street intersection with Pleasant Street. Which itself has been recently upgraded quite a bit to facilitate traffic flow. And particularly truck traffic onto, onto Elm Street. I wasn't aware that that particular parcel was available as, as town-owned land. But it does seem to represent a, a favorable factor, given the nature of the commercial activity. That takes place just a little bit further to the west. As you know, on Pleasant Street, the, the Home Depot and the various restaurants and whatnot. That there's a car dealership, a car wash, filling station, various things, just slightly to the west of that. So I can see that there's some immediate benefit to that immediate neighborhood. And I can also see that it would certainly save, or I should say serve. Greater western Bridgewater, I, I think very well. And of course, the proximity to Route twenty-four, it would seem to me for access for emergency vehicles. Responding to crash scenes and whatnot, it seems to me also be a benefit. So I was not aware of the availability of that site, but. In my estimation, it certainly does appear to have a number of benefits to the town overall.
In addition to what you discussed, the, the fire department did also bring up the construction of large apartment buildings. On the west side of town and all of those apartment buildings are being constructed out of wood. So there's a lot of combustible. It's associated with these large complexes for apartments and those are all being considered on this west part, western side of town. So it's a concern for fire response. It's a lot of combustibles that are being utilized in construction, plus the commercial activity. Which is the real need on the west side of town for fire response in a timely manner.
Well, thank you. Just to give a nod to the comments from Counselor Gallagher. It, it would appear to me that if in fact this were the chosen site. Little preliminary at this stage, but nonetheless, it did receive high marks, I understand. That would seem to greatly elevate the need for a central business district location. As a, as a substation and whether it be in the Legion Field area or somewhere, somewhere else. But as you pointed out, the need for that particular location in the central. Business or near the central business district is that that station would be required to house the, the ladder truck. Which right now is permanently stationed at Station Number Two, the Pratttown Station. Which is the only station that accommodates a vehicle of that length. So I can see that it would, it would really, I think, elevate the need for. Something much closer to town, as Counselor Gallagher had pointed out, given the fact that eleven eighty-five Pleasant Street. Is approaching three miles away from the intersection of Pleasant and South. So that's, that's quite a distance. Three miles would actually be the Route twenty-four interchange. But that was my only comment and I, I appreciate your work on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Wood.
Thank you. Just a couple, couple questions. So as many of you know, I live near Station Two. And it was shut down for a while for budget concerns years ago, but as Counselor Chase points out. It is the only firehouse that can host the ladder truck right now. And I, I doubt during the discussions about the facility. Whether or not, you know, additional equipment came up, but I'm wondering if, if there was discussion about a second ladder truck. In any of the discussions on the firehouse, because in our area, we have BSU with multi-story dormitories. A new, a new building on Borough Ave that's four stories. And so the, the east side is going to need a ladder truck as much as the west side. So that's the first question, but I'll. I'll mix it in with the two other questions. I, I like the Pleasant Street location. I've heard that it's about nine acres. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not.
That is correct.
And I think you said you need about two and a half acres for the, for, for the, the new house. Does that mean that that site is eligible for multi-use? For example, if we want to put a dog park out there or something else out there. Maybe not as, not as part of the fire station, but as long-term strategy. And then the final piece of this is when we split the house. So we, we have Fire Station Two out by me and potentially we have, you know, the headquarters out here on Pleasant Street. Was there any discussion about change in personnel or rebalancing personnel between the two locations? Hopefully that wasn't too much. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I'll try to get an answer to each of your points. Pleasant Street is nine acres. We are not needing all of nine acres for a fire headquarters. So we, you're correct, and two and a half acres was our estimate that would be impacted for the headquarters. The rest of the site is still left available, but the rest of the site also has some wetland. Soils and some wetlands, some, some watercourses that run through it. So not all of the site is developable for a fire headquarters. If we're going to utilize this site for a fire headquarters, it's the furthest east portion of the site is the highest and driest. Available land. So we see a, an entry which is actually close to the intersection of the. The cross street coming in on the east side of this, the site. There's an area that you can see which has some clearing, which is some fill area that's been put onto the site. But if we can enter the site to the east and, and then maintain the eastern side of the site for a fire headquarters. It will leave the, the western part of the site still undeveloped. But also some wet, some wet areas, but recreation, passive recreation and recreation is, is also a. An option for that site. I think the, the other thing you mentioned was, was there discussion of multiple aerial apparatus for the town of Bridgewater? No, they, they feel that having a, an aerial. Vehicle is, is something that you need in town, but they've talked about the location wanting to be closer to the, the university. In the central business district, but if this is where headquarters goes, they have the option to moving the apparel, the aerial to the headquarters location. I don't think putting headquarters here stops the conversation about a, a third station though. I think that conversation's still going to have to happen. It might happen later within the town. And that's where they would prefer to put the aerial would be closer to the central business district. Did that, did that answer all your points?
Um, everything except if there was a discussion about rebalancing personnel between the different.
Oh, yes. Personnel's been a big discussion about, you know, do we build two stations or one? And I think the conversation has become, can you afford the, the two stations as far as staffing is concerned? Because if you build the, the third location. They would want to staff it in a similar manner that they staff the east side station. So it's not just building the building, but it's supporting the staff to be at the building. Having headquarters, you would put all of the staff and all the apparatus in one location. And, and we have gone through projections on staffing this location. But the staffing would go considerably higher if you had a third station in town. So I think that is part of the conversation between the, the building committee and fire department and town manager as to how that's. How that's an option for the town at this point, and that's, that's beyond my pay grade. So I'm just reporting on size, but we have said if they build that central business district facility. There is a staffing component to that, that it's identified within our space needs that would have to be also considered.
Counsel Perry.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, great presentation, Mr. Humes. Mr. Wood just definitely stole a few of my questions, but to expound upon those questions. I do really like the, the Pleasant Street location. I think that's really an ideal spot for that western side of town. I do think it's a definite need for something in the central business district area. I don't think that the Legion Field area would be the best location. I would like to see it located a little further down. Someplace on, on Bedford Street. I think there's probably a few different locations we could look at. My question though is an extension is ambulance service. What have you talked about ambulance service out of these potential locations? Cause I'm, you know, definitely the quicker response to the downtown would be, would be needed and delayed. I think if it goes out to the western part, if, if the ambulances are mostly located there. So can you comment to where ambulances would be placed in these locations?
Yeah, Brian, do you want me to take that?
Yeah, I, I don't have that answer off the top of my head again, but I, you, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me first and foremost say, as the Chair of the Committee. We have had numerous discussions and, and first and foremost is really the input from the fire chief. Certainly none of us understand how that operation works. So first and foremost, we were looking at a three-station concept. There is a severe fiscal restraint, you know, and costs associated with that. And I think that where we are as a building committee is developing the Pleasant Street site. Is the, the ideal location for a new headquarters that houses all of the apparatus. I'll disagree a little bit, or Brian might not have been in the conversation, but I assure you that the chief would be looking for a se- second tower truck. As you know, the state purchased our original tower truck and it, and it's going to be coming to end of life at some point. So we'll, we'll need to have a, a backup plan in place. I think what we're looking at right now is the understanding that, you know, sort of building a strategic plan for the fire department. That separate from this project, looks at long-term staffing and identifying locations now. A part of this process that would put a station in the central business district, but we would not act on it this time. Because the construction costs and the employment costs of filling that adequately to the. Standards by the fire service would just be astronomical. So some of the sites we've looked at Legion Field and luckily for Brian, it was a, it was a great idea. Makes a lot of sense, but it prompted other conversations as well as, you know, Wally Kruger Way. Looking at the parking lot where we're putting the pickleboard ball courts in. So there's lots of ideas. I think part of this, we need to have a plan for a third station. But I certainly don't think it's a good idea to build a fire station that we can't man. And as somebody's already pointed out, we built a substation and had to promptly close it. And I'm reminded every day when I go into Middleborough of a brand-new substation they built off the rotary that has never been staffed. So it doesn't make sense to look at things. What I would say to you is that the fire service and the fire chief is comfortable with. You know, what we have is a lopsided response in the current headquarters location in our substation. This essentially would move us to the outskirts of the town, both east and west. With a response that's coming from both of those stations and, you know, every call that comes in, that's how it's happening now. Equipment is coming from Station Two and from headquarters. So let's just say there's an incident on the west side. The closest response is headquarters and their backup is coming from Station Two. And I don't want to speak out of school here, but I believe that is the normal, everyday staffing response. Because of equipment needs, and I think that that will be a mirror image. So incidents is happening in, in the central business district will actually be attacked from both sides. So if you think about the tracks and the, the reason why we built that substation. If in fact, response from the substation was caught up in traffic on one oh four or by the tracks, we still have response coming. I'm also not a fan of what I would call heat maps. When we look at the timing of, you know, the current setup we have and the locations of the fire stations and what that would look in the new proposal. Because I think it gives citizens a bad sense of I'm losing something and I'm gaining something. I think when you look at all the restrictions in place, trying to find town-owned property. Not having a response to private developable or for sale land. This location really comes to the top of the list. It's buildable into the future. I will add that there is a deed restriction on it because it was a donation to the town. And it's asked for recreational purpose, and I know that the town manager is working with the town attorney to work through that deed restriction. But I think that we can be in a good place. Dr. Hunt has done a lot of research on, on this and some of the ideas of. You know, incorporating walking trails that attach up to the Murray Farm, the other land that we purchased many years ago. Having a small playground in that area. And certainly having traffic control systems out on one oh four and, and have an easy access in both directions. So I think it's a good place. I think a three-station concept, I don't know that the town is in a place to support that type of staffing. And certainly, I would never ask the fire chief. It's certainly to build three stations and then say it must happen with your current staffing. It would just. Firefighters need to be safe, EMS needs to be safe, but I think this is a really good place where we've come to in terms of. You know, finding a location with all the restrictions that we have. I hope that helps to add somewhat to the conversation for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's out of the top. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Again, Brian, thank you very much. I appreciate all of the work that you've put into this point. And certainly appreciate you taking the time out tonight to update the council on where we're at with the fire building committee.
I'll, I'll be looking forward to coming back with more information later.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on, Town Manager's report. First item is the Mitchell School update.
All right, Mr. President, I'll go through these fairly quickly because happily I don't have a whole lot to report. Work does continue on the Mitchell. It's on time, on budget thus far. The only hits that I heard of at a meeting today was that the architect had rejected. Some of the selected brick in a, in a mock-up. When they do these projects, they do a mock-up of. Uh, when when they do these projects, they do a mock-up of of an exterior wall with with a small sampling of brick that's been uh selected, and unfortunately, the brick uh was not uh the correct color. There was a slight variation, so the that's no problem. They're gonna go back and get the different brick and uh and do another mock-up, and hopefully that will be right. So no, no uh delay or uh holdup because of that. It's just a normal course of business. The uh steel continues to go up. Uh, I saw it today, actually, from over on the senior center side, and that's quite impressive. There's a topping off, a sort of a traditional topping off ceremony for uh students and staff, school, Mitchell School staff. Uh, sometime, I think, the second week in June, so that uh that will be uh exciting certainly for the kids uh to do. Uh, no report of any neighbor issues this week. Um, we get a a weekly report uh of any any uh contact with the OPM regarding uh site issues, and we've had none this week, which is good. Um, and as I often say, uh, the timeline is uh it's on budget, on time, and uh and the completion date of July 8th, 2022. The uh the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 14th at 6:30 PM, again, Monday, June 14th, at 6:30 PM via Zoom. And uh and anybody that wants to know anything about the project can certainly go to www.bridgewater-schoolproject.com and uh get all the information in the world. But so far, so good on uh on that project, but happy to answer questions.
Right. Any questions from the council? Do not see any. We'll move on to COVID-19 update.
Uh, COVID-19, I'm happy to report that we are down to one active case uh case in town, which is good news. We believe there may be one active case at the DOC, but uh but certainly pleased about uh down to one uh townwide active case. So uh, good news. Uh, BSU's vaccination site at the Kelly uh Gym, as everyone knows, is up and running. Um, you don't have to make an appointment now uh through the state website. You can simply walk in and uh and be uh vaccinated. So certainly, I encourage people to simply go down to the Kelly Gym. You can park on campus. If you drive, you can certainly walk there uh down Park Avenue, but uh but it's at the Kelly Gym, and and anybody that needs a vaccination, uh, it is available right there. Um, in terms of Bridgewater residents who have been vaccinated, we have a little over a total of forty-three percent at this point that have been fully vaccinated, and then uh another ten percent uh are partially vaccinated who received their first uh vaccination. So uh, so a little more than half have have received some some level of vaccination. So um, again, anybody that needs it uh and wants it at uh BSU, uh at the Kelly Gym, you can just simply walk in and get it. Um, I know that several of the councillors know Governor Baker filed legislation, I believe it was today, to extend uh some of the emergency measures that the state took uh pursuant to the declared state of emergency from last March. Uh, that state of emergency is coming to an end in June, so the governor uh has asked the legislature to continue the uh suspension of certain open meeting law requirements and also uh continue the special permits for expanded outside dining at uh at restaurants and those among a host of other other things. But those uh as it pertains to Bridgewater are probably the most important. Um, so when the the state, uh, just to put it in context, when the state of emergency ends uh in June, um, all of the governor's orders that he's uh issued pursuant to to the pandemic uh and the pandemic response, uh, those all expire. Um, and so legislation uh legislative action is is needed to extend uh any measures that uh that you know, need to be extended. In this case, it's good because uh it's it's a bit of a local, um, sort of, I'll call it a local option, but certainly uh continuing outdoor dining for those that that need it, uh restaurants that need it, and then uh continuing uh some sort of hybrid uh either Zoom meeting or a hybrid uh method so that the public can uh the public but can attend in Zoom, councillors can attend in Zoom, or councillors can attend in person. So we're we're uh we're we're looking at uh at hopefully uh extending those uh until sometime in September, so the legislature can act on sort of permanent changes uh to to uh open meeting law uh specifically. Um. So uh, we are, uh, council president and I are are working on getting uh council meetings, obviously, back to the Academy Building. I think uh most councillors are anxious to get back. But again, uh, I suspect that that uh we'll be looking at some sort of hybrid, uh, especially if the legislature takes up um that uh the governor's proposal and and uh and we uh can at least extend uh the Zoom uh feature there uh for at least uh into September. So so that that's really where we stand in terms of uh COVID-19 and our our response and vaccinations, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Um, moving on, items for next meeting. Does anyone have anything that they wish to be brought up at the next meeting?
Mr. President.
Counsel Suza, go ahead.
Through to the town managers, through you. Uh, a while back, a individual was hired to uh oversee the maintenance of our buildings. Uh, he was supposed to be doing an evaluation, coming up with needs, uh, cost and a timeline. I would like to see him, like, and other departments have come in before the council and give us an update report on what his findings are.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Suza. Anything else for the town manager?
Mr. President.
Counsel George.
Through you to the town manager. Can we also get an update on the town hall? Um, and if we could specifically focus on plans for future future usage, I think the conversation today about the Memorial Building, um, you know, being a temporary spot for uh town offices that we need, uh, we need to start really taking a hard look at the at the town hall for future use for um offices and things of that nature.
Any other co- any other councillors? Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, since we're going to be having a transition of council clerk in the next month, I'll I'll say it here is that, Michael, if there's a possibility, if you're comfortable, on the next agenda is to, you know, try to give us an update as to what happened with the Broad Street development, you know, what went wrong? Um, where does it stand? Um, is there any hope? I mean, we have, are we going to be looking at that site the way it is for ten, fifteen years, or are we still trying to work on something? I guess, you know, provide us a little bit of an update of if there's any hope. Um, I hope, I hope there is hope, and um I I I know the planning board took a vote, and from what I read or heard, the developer wasn't happy with the vote, and he, from my understanding, isn't going to do anything or might do something. I don't know, but I I guess I just would feel comfortable with the public to know, you know, wh- what are the sticking points, and i- is there any hope?
Uh, while I I completely understand, obviously, the want to to have that out in the public, we I certainly don't want the town manager speculating as to why the developer is going to develop or not develop based on the special permit. So I would just say that that should be based on the facts as they are um without any speculation as to
Right.
what he decides to do or doesn't do.
Right.
Um, or why the planning board made the decision they made or didn't make, because I don't, I don't think that that's appropriately addressed by the town manager. He didn't make any of those decisions, so.
Right.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Counsel Gallagher?
Um, you know, but just an update as to, you know, what transpired, that's all. And I I don't want to ask you to speculate, but you know, is is the planning board still nego- still trying to work with the developer? I mean, um, you know, just where it stands and, you know, if there's if there's any hope.
I can, I can give an update.
No, just what you can give. I don't want to ask you to say things you shouldn't say or put you in any spot, but.
Okay, any other members of the council? Okay, as a reminder, you'll get an email if you want to add anything uh at some point. There'll be a deadline. Just try to get it in. Uh, moving on, Jay, discussions. There are none. Kay, committee reports. Are there any committee report updates? Counselor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm happy to inform the council that um the Ad Hoc Committee formed to um help to identify candidates to fill the position of the uh town council clerk uh conducted its first meeting this week. Um, yeah, I attended along with uh uh Councillors Souza and George. Um, uh, I had been elected uh as chairman of the committee. We had a wide-ranging discussion. It uh it focused upon the uh many aspects of this um uh position, uh, from qualifications uh to the actual job description uh itself and the approval process, the the vetting process for candidates. Um, we had a number of good suggestions. We also did have in attendance um uh a- and was present to provide some very valuable input for us, I think, and I appreciate that uh she was able to do that. So what we have concluded to do just to at that initial meeting was to um, uh, begin work immediately on the on the job description and also to uh find a how we can better utilize, how we can best utilize uh available resources in the town to uh seek qualified candidates uh for the position. Uh, so we'll begin conducting some meetings with other town personnel uh in that regard. Uh, we've uh set a date for our next uh meeting, which will be uh next week. It'll be on June 2nd. We want to uh move the process along as quickly as we can. And uh I think the first meeting was a very uh positive first step.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from council members? Don't see any. Uh, I would just say, uh, thank you, Counselor Chase, Counselor George, and Counselor Souza for stepping up uh for this really important role, and uh I appreciate the the timeliness of you already getting together and meeting to work through a job description so we can get it posted. Thank you. Moving on, L, legislation for action. A, order zero FY twenty-one dash zero four-two rescind Elm Street roadway project loan authorization. At their meeting held on five seventeen twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to oh to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met on five twenty-four twenty-one. Their disposition uh will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening, pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. Uh, refer the town manager. Do you have an update from the Finance Committee?
Uh, Mr. President, the Finance Committee has approved uh these, all of these, actually, and uh this one in particular, I think, is quite self-explanatory. Uh, it just rescinds the excess uh borrowing uh authorization that we don't need because of the Mass Works grant that we received.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, Counsel George, any questions?
None.
Counsel Chase.
No, nothing, thank you.
Any other members? Seeing none, uh, move for roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Item B, order zero FY twenty-one dash zero four-three, transfer order, First Street Roadway Betterment. At their meeting held on five seventeen twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to oh to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met five twenty-four twenty-one. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening, pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. Mr. Dutton, do we have a disposition for the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee also approved this one, and it uh again simply is taking your, taking the money out of the Betterment Fund uh into which uh the uh businesses on First Street uh pay into, and then funneling that out to pay the uh borrowing that that was uh done in order to First Street.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any councillors with questions? Counsel Colomotus.
Uh, just for clarification, so essentially, the town acted as kind of a pass-through for these private funds for the improvements. Is that right, Mr.?
That's exactly right, Counselor. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel George, any questions?
None.
Counsel Souza?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Um, so move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, zero against.
Item C, order zero FY twenty-one dash zero four-four, acceptance of grant, complete streets tier-three construction grant. At their meeting held on five seventeen twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to oh to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met on five twenty-four twenty-one. Their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening, pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. Mr. Dutton.
Uh, Mr. President, Finance Committee also approved this, and this one is uh is is the council acceptance of the four hundred thousand to make improvements. Um, and I can show the improvements if you want to see the map of Main Street and Broad Street. Uh, but it it uh includes uh bike lane, uh pedestrian crossing, uh, and then bumpouts, a couple of bumpouts on uh Broad Street and uh and restriping of uh crosswalks as well.
Thank you. I believe the council will stand and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any um any other q- questions, Counsel George?
None.
Any questions, Counsel Souza?
No, sir.
Any other members of the council? Counselor Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if I may throw you uh to the town manager, I I understand, Mr. Mr. Dutton, that um uh if I understand correctly, I should say that a certain portion of the uh the funding of this grant uh uh maybe, uh, I don't know if I should say withheld, but it might need to be reallocated if if possible, given the situation uh uh that we referred to earlier, the development on Broad Street that may or may not come to fruition. Um, I'm ju- I'm just wondering if if you can comment just briefly on that.
Uh, there is a component of uh of this grant. Uh, keep in mind, these these, this grant comes pursuant to a um a prioritized list of projects that was done probably four or five years ago at this point uh under the Complete Streets program. So we we did a a townwide analysis, um, had several public hearings in in which uh the the residents were were invited to identify areas of concern, and uh so obviously uh Broad Street and and as well as Main Street were on that list, and uh and we applied for funding two years ago, almost two years ago um to do these two particular projects because uh those were uh the best possibility of us to get actually get funded. Uh, and they they ranked uh high in our our priority list. So uh, so it is done pursuant to that. So it, there is some um uh, given what what the developer on Broad Street had uh proposed to do uh in his uh development, uh i- as part of a mitigation was was bumpouts uh that that may conflict, not conflict, but may be um repetitive of the ones that we've gotten funding for here. Uh, so Mast dot is uh aware of that, and and we can have some flexibility if the developer proceeds uh with his project. We have some uh flexibility to to um, you know, do bumpouts at a different location on Broad Street uh as needed. So so there is a little bit of flexibility there. Main Street is pretty well set. Uh, there's no no uh particular issues there. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counsel Wood, apologize.
That's okay.
Um, thank you, so, uh, here we're just talking about funding, but will we subsequently see the actual results of what's going to be done, I, I know the, I know the request was based on estimates and some proposals, but not, not necessarily fixed, um, you know, fixed work. Um, a- and I mentioned that because whether or not anything gets developed on Broad Street, what I'm seeing now is, um, people are parking in the Friendly's parking lot and walking across the street to the new restaurant, which is exactly what the Planning Board was talking about in reverse, and why they were so adamant about having the safety features there, so it's likely we're gonna be multi-years away from anything like a bump out at that location, so are we gonna, are we gonna see work orders or something to that degree at that location, or, or to talk about that?
If, if, if it's clear that the developer's not gonna proceed, uh, then we would go ahead and do, uh, the bump outs as called for, uh, right along Broad Street, um, and, and in that case, I think that resolves the issue that you're talking about, um, about creating safe passage across Broad Street for people, whether they're parking on the east side or the west side and, and vice versa, so, um, so the final, uh, the final engineering, uh, is close to being completed. So, uh, once that is completed, I'm happy to, happy to share that with the council.
Counselor Perry?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mrs. Dunn, was any of this money, again, if you said that, uh, there wasn't much need of anything on Main Street currently, is there any of this that could be extended into Central Square? From talks that we've had in past years about, uh, crosswalks and bump outs and, and safety concerns, uh, with Central Square, was any, was any of this money's earmarked for Central Square at all, or was that something separate?
No, that, that was a, under the Complete Streets, um, um, priority list, that was a separate, uh, separate item, which, uh, which we are getting ready to apply for, uh, once, once we make, uh, once the council makes, you know, final decisions on what it wants to see in Central Square, so that's, that's coming up, uh, probably later in the fall. Um, but when I, when I said not much is needed on Main Street, what I meant was not much in the way of any kind of revisions to the current plan. So Main Street, Main Street will see bike lane, will see, uh, improved pedestrian crossings, um, and then, uh, also some, um, uh, crossing, uh, flashing signs, uh, at, at the improved crosswalks, so, certainly up at Heritage, uh, Circle, that's, that's kind of critical.
Certainly, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Item D, Order Zero F Y twenty-one dash zero four-six, Capital Transfer Order, Water Fund. At their meeting held on five seventeen twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to O to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met on five twenty-four twenty-one, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. Mr. Dutton?
Uh, again, Finance Committee, uh, voted to recommend, uh, this piece of legislation, and this one is simply, uh, part of the, uh, the, uh, spring, uh, capital allocations, uh, again, it, it, uh, purchases three, uh, vehicles needed by the Water Department, and, uh, the funding comes from the Water Department's, uh, capital, uh, fund.
Entertain a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions, Counsel George?
None.
Any council, any questions, Counsel Chase?
No, thank you.
Any other members of the council? Seeing none, uh, move for all call vote.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Item E, Order Zero F Y twenty-one dash zero four-seven, Capital Transfer Order Sewer Fund. At their meeting held five seventeen twenty-one, the Budget and Finance Committee voted three to O to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee met on five twenty-four twenty-one, their disposition will be provided upon receipt. This measure may be finally voted this evening pending the disposition of the Finance Committee. Mr. Dutton?
Uh, Finance Committee also voted to recommend approval of this, uh, piece of legislation, and it, uh, as, as it says, it, it replaces, uh, two pieces, two pieces of equipment. Uh, one of them, I'll note only for, uh, folks in the public that don't see this, um, replaces a nineteen sixty-eight, uh, heist or forklift, uh, so I think we got our money's worth uh, out of that, so, uh, it does, uh, again, take, uh, the money out of the sewer, uh, reserves, capital reserves, and, uh, also reuses, uh, previously appropriated, uh, capital funds that were, uh, not needed in prior year, so, actually money, money savings from the prior year.
Okay, thank you, motion, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A- any other questions, Counsel George?
None.
Any questions, Counsel Souza?
No, sir.
Any questions from any members of the council? Nope, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you, Item F, Resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero seven, a resolution in recognition of Gay Pride Month. This measure was not referred to a committee, fourteen days has elapsed per Section eighteen of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore, this may, mismeasure may be finally considered this evening. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Now, second.
Any questions, Counsel George?
None.
Any questions, Counsel Gallagher?
Um, no, Mr. President, but if, if it's okay, I mean, I like to read this into the record since we didn't, um, have a, we didn't read it into a record last week, so, I'll just take a few minutes to read the, the resolution, uh, R F Y twenty-one zero zero seven.
Absolutely, sir, go ahead.
It's a resolution in recognition of Gay Pride Month, whereas the Town of Bridgewater is committed to creating an inclusion, safe, and compassionate community throughout supporting its diversity. And whereas, in January two thousand sixteen, the Town of Bridgewater proclaimed its support of the citizens for civility and respect, now known as Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, by resolving that we are a community of civility, where tol- intolerance, speech, and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business. And whereas, the Town of Bridgewater has a diverse LGBTQ community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, professions, who should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on gender ident- gender identity or sexual orientation. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts became the first state in the nation to recognize and allow same-sex marriages. And whereas, everyone should be able to live and work without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gender, identity, or sexual orientation, and that should be acknowledged at all levels of government. And therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Bridgewater, on behalf of its residents, hereby proclaim June twenty-twenty-one as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in the Town of Bridgewater. And be it further resolved that the Town of Bridgewater, Town Council, fully supports the gay pride flag to be flown with the United States flag in front of the Academy Building in the Town of Bridgewater for the week of June seventh to June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher, anything else? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I appreciate, um, reading it and appreciate the, I hope we have the full support of the council on this.
And I move to Counselor Chase.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I, I am also very appreciative of the fact that, uh, uh, both yourself and Counselor Gallagher, uh, co-sponsored this item, uh, with me, and, um, I think that the, uh, the flying of the flag is a matter that we've discussed in the past, and we have a a, a pending matter before one of the committees of the council. Um, it was not possible, uh, you know, given time limitations, to uh, fully consider that proposal in time for it to be effective for, uh, the month of June this year. And therefore, this resolution was necessary to accomplish that, uh, feat of, um, having the flag available to be flown from, uh, town property this, uh, this year, I think it's a, um, I think it's a wonderful tribute to, um, the inclusiveness and acceptance of the residents of, uh, the Town of Bridgewater. And, uh, I think it should be at the source, uh, itself of, uh, great pride in our community and its residents, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase, any other comments from the council? Coach, seeing none, we'll move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Moving on, G, Resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero eight, a resolution relative to diversity and respect. This measure was not referred to a committee, fourteen days has elapsed per Section eighteen of the Council Rules and Procedures, therefore, this measure may be finally considered this evening. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any counselors, um, have any comments, start with Counsel George.
None.
Counsel Chase?
Uh, just that it is a, uh, once again, I think it's a, um, a great tribute to, um, uh, to yourself, uh, Counselor Rushton, for having brought this matter forward. I think it's well worth, uh, full support of the council, and, uh, I appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Chase, any other members of the council, Counsel Peter, uh, Counselor Colomotus?
Um, I just appreciate this expression of just basic human decency for, for our diversity, thank you.
Thank you, any other members of the council? Uh, and if you would, uh, seeing no other questions, I would just, just to read it, um, as Counsel Gallagher read the last resolution. Um, a resolution relative to diversity and respect, uh, whereas Bridgewater is a town that highly values diversity, dignity, and respect for all individuals. As a legislative branch of the town, the Town Council recognizes its responsibility to make the following declarations, and whereas, the Town Council opposes unequivocally any expression of hate, prejudice, intolerance, or discrimination toward any individual or group. And whereas, the Town Council commits to engaging the town on race, equity, and inclusion through broad and collaborative public engagement. And be it resolved that the Town Council denounces any form of racism, discrimination, or intolerance as a threat to the safety and well-being of the public. We call upon the entire Bridgewater community to welcome every resident, visitor, employee, and student in town. And I will just say to add to that is that my intent was to continue upon the, the past two council presidents, the work of the Town Manager, the work of the Assistant Town Manager, and all the work that we have done around diversity, equity, inclusion, and that is my intent over the next year, to follow up and make sure that we continue to progress in those areas. So I appreciate all of your support on this measure. Um, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you, moving on, M, old business, we have none, move to N, new business. First item is A, Order Zero F Y twenty-one dash zero four-eight, Acceptance of a Gift, Bridgewater Police Association, uh, explanation from the Town Manager. Mr. Dutton, you're muted, sorry.
Sorry, uh,
Don't worry.
The Bridgewater Police Association was gracious enough to, uh, award, uh, to the town, uh, the sum of two thousand dollars as part of their, uh, fundraising efforts, um, and specifically, uh, award those funds to the town to assist in the repair of the, uh, flagpole by the, uh, World War One Memorial, so we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you, entertain a motion to, uh, refer to the Budget and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Also, Budget, Finance, and Finance Committee?
Budget, Finance, and Finance Committee.
And Finance Committee, yes, uh, I just missed the, uh, who supported that, it was the Counsel Souza and Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
Counsel Souza, any questions?
No, sir.
Any questions, Counsel Chase?
Uh, no, I just, uh, wish to thank the association, I think it's a tremendous, uh, uh, gift to the town, and, uh, we certainly appreciate their, uh, their generosity.
Thank you, any other members, uh, of the council with any comments? Questions? Okay, seeing none, uh, move for roll call vote.
Mr. Colomotus? Oh, boy.
He's disappeared.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Okay, excellent, moving on, Item B, Order Zero F Y twenty-one dash zero four-nine, Acceptance of a Grant, Home Depot Foundation. Mr. Dutton?
Uh, Mr. President, our, uh, our Elder Affairs, uh, Department, Elder Affairs Director has, uh, been working very closely with Home Depot to get, uh, cleaning supplies, specifically cleaning supplies to seniors and, uh, residents who need them, uh, and, uh, Home Depot Foundation has committed thirty-five hundred, uh, dollars to that, uh, effort, and we certainly appreciate that.
Excellent, entertain a motion to refer the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Counsel Souza, any comments?
My former employer, uh, no, no further comments.
Okay, Counsel George?
None.
Any, any other comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, uh, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
Yes.
Thank you, nine in favor, none against.
What's that?
Moving on, Item C, Order Zero F Y twenty-one dash zero fifty-one, Laying Out and Acceptance of Private Ways, Upland Drive and Strathmore Road. Counselor Wood?
Thank you, uh, constituent brought this to my attention, uh, a while ago. It's been working through the Highway, uh, Department slash, uh, DPW. Um, everyone on the council received an updated email, uh, late this afternoon after inspection, um, from, uh, the, uh, Director, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna be able to pronounce this last name again, Azu, uh,
Antonero.
Antonero, thank you. Um, uh, identifying that now it, everything is acceptable. Um, I walked this road several times a, a week, it's in good shape, and, uh, the actual end of Strathmore is in East Bridgewater, so I'm sure it would be awkward for the way East Bridgewater has to come in and, and pick up the paws, but it's, it's a good road, um, and it's finished, and, um, I think I, I need to ask, is the next step, we move it to Planning Board, is that the correct next step?
That is correct, so you will vote, um, you will vote to, uh, lay out the way tonight, and then you will vote to refer it to Planning Board for a recommendation.
So that's first, I'd be looking for, uh, entertain a motion of the town's intent to lay out the way. So that's first, I'd be looking for entertain a motion of the town's intent to lay out the way.
So moved.
Second.
Council George, any comments?
Uh, none.
Council Chase.
No, no comment.
Okay. Any any comments from the council? Okay, see and none. Move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes. He might have stepped away again.
Yes.
There you are. Thank you. Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor and none against.
Okay, now we'll entertain a motion to refer to the Planning Board for a non-binding recommendation.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Okay, Council Wood, anything to add? Council George.
Nothing.
Any members of the council? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on, D. Resolution R F Y twenty-one dash zero zero nine, Future Retail Sale of Marijuana Guidelines Resolution. Councilor Wood.
Thank you. I worked with Counselor Chase to put this together. Maybe we could have picked a better title. It's it's really a recognition of the recent recent ballot question that we had. As you can see by the text, I won't read the whole text tonight, but as you can see by the explanation, all the precincts for number two voted yes, and number two was a tie on Saturday and a one vote difference on the official count. It was interesting to hear the comments earlier and 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 part of it was one of the comments was exactly why I wanted to bring this forward to the council. I immediately heard that, you know, the results of the of the election were too low to to really make it count. And then I also heard tonight that, you know, there was a COVID on, so maybe people stayed home, but I have to read. You know, I have to say that in November of this past year, we had an 80% turnout right in the middle of COVID without any vaccines. So people aren't afraid to come out and vote. They just may not have come out on this particular issue. And if if the election was too small, then, you know, we might have to think about recalling Tim back to the council or Asia back to the council or, you know, saying goodbye to Mr. Moore and, you know, that sort of thing. I'm a I'm a data guy, so when you look back at the at the last several elections, the election we're in April of nineteen that included the charter question brought out 5% of vote. The other ones are bouncing between three and four for the past several years. And this one brought over ten and a half percent of the votes. So I think I think the vote's there. And so this this resolution is really just to for us to recognize as a body that that the that the town did advise us and the results. We accept the results of of the resolution. It doesn't change zoning. It doesn't change. And it doesn't change anything else about it at this point. It just simply recognizes that that we had the vote and these are the results. And I'll turn the rest of the time over to Council Chase.
Council Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do concur with Mr. Wood and with respect to the this discussion of the the vote results. You know, I've also taken a look at the official vote tabulations from recent years in the town for town elections each spring. The 2021 election, there were 1,891 total ballots cast. And and in June of 2020, which was the annual town election that had been postponed from April and conducted in June because of the onset of the pandemic, there were 1,731 ballots cast, a very minor difference. And these figures for these last two years are frankly rather indicative of Bridgewater voting patterns in town elections. Sad to say, but we all know that voter turnout for town elections is very small. And it has not been during the course of the pandemic in 2020 or 2021. It has not been notably unusual for the town of Bridgewater. That said, the the vote frankly was rather decisive in favor of considering recreational marijuana for for sale in Bridgewater. Some of you might remember that when Counselor Wood had first proposed this to move forward to the ballot some months ago. There was discussion about, you know, why it was being done and some of the same comments that were for tonight. And I can understand that, but I had to take a step back and I did say publicly in the council, I said, how can we be faulted for putting a question before the voters in a non-binding referendum? And unfortunately, I think we now see, even though it was a rhetorical question, we can now see how we are faulted for doing that. And and Counselor Wood just referred to some of the criticisms that we have that we have faced. There were some people who seemed to contend that it was in some manner contrived because we we knew the outcome or some such thing. Well, that's obviously totally erroneous because even as I considered the the measure back some months ago when it was proposed, I was rather doubtful about the outcome. I I rather suspected it would not pass. But nonetheless, so it did. We had comments to the effect that, well, it was a non-binding vote, so I guess I'm supposed to interpret that to mean that some people didn't bother to come out. In other words, if it had been a binding measure, they would have made the effort. Well, frankly, citizens, when a measure makes itself makes its way to the ballot, whether binding or not, it is an important matter. It's there for a reason. And some people even questioned the the fact that we held an election during a pandemic. Well, we're required to hold an election as we did this year, pandemic or not. We did it in accordance with state guidelines and procedures in respect of COVID-19, but we're required by our charter and by state and by state law to conduct elections. So it was simply a matter of adding this ballot question, this question to the ballot for consideration by the voters. People had spoken about confusing language. Well, take a step back, please, and look at the language once again. I've been voting for 50 years and I've seen a good many referendum questions that frankly are much more complex and confusing than what was put before the voters of this town in April on this question. I believe it was actually very straightforward and not confusing at all. There are other, you know, other comments brought up that, you know, frankly, I I I just don't know how to respond to, although I've spent most of my afternoon doing just that in email responses to constituents and others. So I guess what I just wanted to say was, I think that the result speaks for itself in and of itself. It doesn't mean that anything is happening. And I I cautioned people about that today in my responses. We have to see what what the sense of the council is and what comes going forward, if anything. So with that, I'll I'll reserve further comment, but I appreciate the opportunity to make these points.
Just personally, I'll make a motion to keep it at the council level.
Council George.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution.
Second.
The mention. What's the motion?
Hold on one second. There's a a motion and no second. And Counselor George, you're making a motion to amend language. And what?
So what I would like to amend is this. In the paragraph that says now therefore be it resolved, I would like to strike out enacted by town council. I would like to add enacted by the voters of Bridgewater. On top of that, I would like to strike out everything under explanation and add in there, this is to see if the resident, the voters of Bridgewater want to allow recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. I think I have said this since the beginning, when this came up two years ago. I do not feel that the town council should be making this decision as a townwide matter. It should be put in the hands of the voters to make a final decision of yea or nay. If we had followed that path two years ago, like many people said, we wouldn't be here today. Those that those are my amendments.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, motion seconded by Counselor Gallagher. Counselor Gallagher, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. First of all, I I I agree with what Counselor George wants to do. I think perhaps what may be better is a separate piece of legislation come forward to do what he wants to do. And we defeat we defeat this resolution tonight. But my issue with this resolution and it it really is just recognizing as Counselor Wood started out talking about, but Counselor Chase, with all due respect to both of them, Counselor Chase just went into the question that was on the ballot. Counselor Wood kept talking about the results and these are the results. I don't think that a resolution is an appropriate thing to put forth to tell us how we voted. We know how we voted and the town clerk read those results and they've been posted on the town website. We all know what the vote was. You know, I won my election. Where's my resolution? You know, Counselor Moore won his result, won his election. Where's his resolution? Counselor Colin Botes and Counselor Perry, they won their elections. Where's their resolution? We didn't need something like this for the council to show how people voted because if if district, if precinct three or precinct four knew that a retail shop was going in their district, those votes wouldn't be what they are. We all know that. This is a divisive issue in our community. It's not resolved yet. What should have happened tonight or in a couple of weeks or what should happen is a discussion item on our agenda to talk about what the next steps could or should be or no steps at all. And that's where what Counselor George's intent is should be brought up. So I I don't know what the point is of this resolution. Yeah, it was on the ballot. It was on the ballot and it it passed based on the sampling of voters that voted. We all know that. Not a large sampling. It was a small sampling of voters and there's 26,000 people in this community. You all talked about residents, the citizens. There were voters that voted. And there's 50% of the town that aren't voters that are residents. And we all know that 89% of the town did not vote. 89% of the voters in this town did not vote on this issue. And it still is a divisive issue in the town. As we heard earlier in the meeting, more discussion needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher. So the discussion is on the motion as proposed by Counselor George. That discussion continues. Counselor Colin Botes.
Um, I would insist that the the amendment proposed by Counselor George is out of order. First of all, I would think that language that says shall is not does not comport with a resolution. And perhaps we could hear from Mr. Rollins on that point. Resolutions really should just offer opinions and not really
I I agree.
Call for actions.
With Counselor Colin Botes, I'm not sure that that was the intention of Counselor George's amendment, but obviously a resolution cannot and does not compel any action. It's not an order order or ordinance. So a resolution is a statement that you all make, so it can't do anything greater than make a statement. So if if the amendment in any way compels an action, then it would be inappropriate as a resolution.
Okay, Counsel Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to either Counselors Wood or Chase, what is your ultimate goal here for this resolution? Oh, what what is what is the goal for this?
Counsel. Counsel Wood.
Thank you. As I as I said before, simply to have us acknowledge the results. It it's too easy to to bypass them and to be dismissive of them. You know, we should respect the voters that came out that day. We should respect the voters that stayed home that day. It was certainly enough enough signage to say that there was an election going on or charter says there's some so it doesn't matter how many people showed up that day. We have to respect people that stayed home as much as as the people that came out to vote and I I disagree removing the explanation that, you know, taking away the percentages. The percentages weren't announced that night and 57.5% is is a pretty good yes vote on to my record. And so I I disagree with the amendment as proposed as as Attorney Rollins said. We're not asking for an action here. We're just asking to recognize the the recent results.
So if I could, to to Town Attorney, the discussion on the proposed amendment by Counselor George, is it appropriate to further discussion on that now?
Well, yeah, I mean, I I would have to. I I had a hard time because obviously I'm I can't see that right in front of me. Figuring out if it is an action that's being requested or some sort of acknowledgement that I think it's all in the semantics of the amendment. So if you can rephrase the amendment in such a way where it doesn't require an action, certainly you can you can vote on that type of amendment to a resolution. But if it requires an action, it's 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 not a resolution.
Okay, so so point of information. If if we do not, if we do not change the way it is constructed right now, are we potentially putting it in play that if a decision comes to change the zoning to allow retail marijuana, that we're bound to do it at the council level?
No. This is this is a this is a resolution acknowledging the numbers specifically and the results of the last election. That's simply in my mind that that's all this is. This has no impact on zoning. It is not a zoning ordinance, so it is a resolution, plain and simple.
I withdraw. I withdraw my motion.
I'll second that. I'll second.
I would I would I would like to make another motion to strike out the last line of saying any zoning changes enacted by the town council should be identified. The number of shops permitted, the zones, where is the shops are permitted and the security regulations, the shops must adhere to. I don't I don't really understand why that needs to be in there. We're just making a statement about the results of the election, so I'd like to make that amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have an amendment that strikes out near now therefore be it resolved. Any zoning changes enacted by the town council shall identify the number of shops permitted, the zones where the shops are permitted, and the security regulations the shops must adhere to. Motion made by Counselor George, seconded by Gallagher. I would go to Counselor Gallagher. Any further?
Right, I mean, I I mean, if the town attorney saying that what Counselor George proposed earlier is action, then so would this. I mean, and he's now requesting to remove this. So the 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 way it's written that any zoning changes enacted by the, that's an action too. It's it's exactly what you're saying. The amendment was out of order in doing. That was an action too, but I would just assume remove the whole thing because you're saying that the town council recognized it has been informed that the public supports allowing the retail sale of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. I'm not so sure the public supports that. A sampling of voters in a non-binding question supported it. Not that the public now supports. That's a strong statement.
Sorry, speaking to because you're making the the point on the amendment. Sorry, speaking to, because you're making the point on the amendment. The statement, "Any zoning changes enacted by the town council shall identify the number of shops permitted, the zone where the shops are permitted, and the security regulations the shops must adhere to," does not compel or force an action. So we can start with that as the basic premise.
It leads to one.
The amendment, it was unclear what the amendment was requiring as it relates to the second part of where that enacted by comes in. But this is not saying that the town council has to enact anything. It's saying that any zoning changes that are enacted have to identify these specific things. So I think striking it is a completely appropriate way to amend it in the way that I think Councilor George was attempting to do.
Right, and I'm looking to strike that last sentence that begins with "any zoning changes." Just strike it out.
Correct.
Okay, speaking on the amendment, Councilor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. As to the discussion we're having now concerning that language, I just wanted to point out that the purpose of that paragraph was not to envision any action in the future. It was really intended to particularly for persons who are concerned, most concerned about this issue, and who felt most opposed to adult-use marijuana for sale in Bridgewater. That it would tell them that this resolution is really only doing what we have said at the outset. It's acknowledging what has been the will of the voters in the April election on this matter. That is the will of the voters. That's what the resolution was intended to do. The added language under the paragraph that we've been debating was really only intended to remind people that this is not paving the way necessarily for anything else to happen, because various other steps would have to take place in order for that to happen. So in other words, it was really intended to, if you will, mollify some persons who might be very adamantly opposed to adult sale of marijuana. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Chase. Councilor Colom Bodas.
So in response to Mr. Chase, so perhaps better phrasing would, might have been the council affirms that any future use shall or shall include provisions for zoning and location, right? They're just, it would recognize that. It would express an opinion that future legislation should do this, right? Expressing that opinion, right, in order to mollify its public concern. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Councilor Chase is, in my understanding, given an explanation, but we're still having a discussion on the proposed amendment. So let's just keep it to that so we can get through. Keep it in mind that it's 10:15. There's a number of discussions around the language of the actual resolution that may be shining a light for what the next step might be on behalf of Councilor Wood and Councilor Chase, but I'll move to Councilor Gallagher.
And just quickly, with the amendment, if we take out that sentence, I mean, you know, this has been like a three, four-step process. You know, we we voted five to four to put a non-binding question on the ballot. Step one. Step two, the people voted. Step three is a resolution. Step four would be some legislation we know is going to come down the road with a zoning change. That's the next step. So it's like, let's move this along. I really think that this should be defeated tonight. Bring back something constructive. We can have a discussion as a council about not declaring an election victory that we all know happened. We all know what the election results were.
Thank you, Councilor Gallagher. Councilor Wood.
Thank you. You know, the point that someone made in citizens' comments about becoming educated is quite pointed. Because the last line, if you remove it, if you don't remove it, it's language covered under MGL 94G, and the CMRs coming out of the work that the commission's done. It's when you permit for retail, you have to identify the number, and there's a law that says how many you can have as a minimum and a maximum. You have to zone, you know, apply for zoning, apply that, and the, you know, the regulations can work on security as well. So if it's removed, it's removed, but it doesn't change the fact that sometime in the future, if this comes up, those three elements will be part of legislation, whether it's voted on by the council or at large. But the second thing is, you know, dismissing the resolution at hand is like saying, well, the election didn't happen. And that was the whole.
Councilor Wood, we can have that discussion when we come back to the full resolution. I'd like to just stick to the amendment as it's proposed. If there's any other discussion on the proposed amendment, let me know if you'd like to speak, any member of the council. Okay, so the vote right now, so that I'm clear, is we're striking out the last sentence of "now therefore be it resolved." That is the motion.
No, no, no. The last sentence that starts with "any zoning changes."
Yes, I stand corrected. I apologize. I meant in that paragraph, but certainly, it's just the last sentence starting with "any zoning changes enacted by the town council shall identify the number of shops permitted, the zone where the shops are permitted, and the security regulations the shops must adhere to." We have a motion, we have a second, we've had a robust discussion, I'd like to move it to vote. So I'd move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colom Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Sorry, eight in favor, one against.
So now we're back to the resolution. I would start with Councilor Wood. Is there anything that you'd like to add after having the discussion we've just had on the proposed amendment?
I'll come back to my motion, which was actually still open, which is, I make a motion to keep it at the council level.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Colom Bodas, Councilor Wood, do you have anything else?
I just can't imagine that any, you know, committee would add anything to this work, so it makes sense to keep it here for two weeks for our next meeting.
Absolutely. Councilor Colom Bodas.
Yeah, I agree with that reading.
Okay, so I would open it up to the full council. Any other councils have any comments? Councilor Gallagher.
Just the comment that I have, and you know, I'm not going to dispute the facts of the election. That's, I don't think it's needed. The town clerk certified the election results that's posted. It's out there. We don't need a resolution like this. But I do disagree with the statement that the town, if we end up approving this, the next meeting.
Councilor Gallagher?
Yep.
If we could, so the motion right now is to keep it at the council level, so if we keep the discussion just to that, and then we'll get back to the full resolution.
Right, my argument, voting no on this, is I disagree with the last, the sentence that the town council recognizes that has been informed that the public supports allowing the retail sales of marijuana. I think that language needs to change, and I'm not going to make an amendment to change it. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Council, Council Perry.
Thank you. I mean, the only other subcommittee I thought that maybe would have to be necessary to refer to would be to develop economic development. But since most of the councilors involved in this, plus what this Councilor Colom Bodas just stated, are in favor of keeping it at the council level, it doesn't seem like it would be appropriate to go to that level. So that was just my observation and comment regarding.
Okay, any other members of the council? Seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second to keep it at the council level. Move to a roll call vote.
They're good. This is a mild.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Oh, I'm just, thank you. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colom Bodas?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Okay, going back to the original resolution, there'll be no vote tonight, but I'll continue the discussion. But just please, members of the council will have an opportunity to speak again when it returns, and it is 10:20 in the evening. Councilor Colom Bodas.
I would just assert that any self-respecting statistician would not consider a 10% response rate convincing to lead to a convincing result. So I can't, I think the statement to say that the town people affirm that, you know, that support the sale of recreational marijuana is fallacious. I don't think we, yep.
Any other councils? Councilor Moore?
Just real quick, I did receive a lot of email from citizens wondering about the, not just from the council who voted. So I do like this sort of statement from us, and we know that it was a real vote. We know that the people who voted had that other dimension, just us standing behind the integrity of the overall vote, separate from the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Okay, I believe that the next step here, moving on, is we're going to need a motion to continue to take items beyond 10 o'clock. If someone has certainly entertained that motion, if you'd like.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so Councilor George and Councilor Moore, I'll move right to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colom Bodas?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Mr. Rushton, you actually will need to, for each subsequent item that you're going to take after the time, you actually have to vote to do that. So just so you know that procedurally.
Okay, so to my understanding, I know entertain a motion to take up Resolution RFY 21010.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Move to a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion is to
I am so sorry. I thought you already took that motion. I thought you already voted to take up an item after 10.
We, the motion was to continue the meeting and to take up other additional items, but specifically, Item E, Resolution RFY 21010.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
No worries. It's getting late.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry? Mr. Chase? Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colom Bodas?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Resolution RFY 21010, a resolution designating June 19th as a town holiday. Councilor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Am I proposing this tonight? I guess it's the night of resolutions, huh? I've got a few. As you know, a year ago, the Governor, Governor Baker in the legislature approved Juneteenth, June 19th as a state-recognized holiday. And in recognition, or commemoration, I should say, of Juneteenth, which took place on June 19th, 1865. So this resolution formally acknowledges and designates June 19th as a town holiday. So I put that forward, and I'll read the full thing at our next meeting in full as when we take a vote.
Thank you, Councilor Gallagher. Open it up to any councils for any council comments. Okay, seeing none, I would just, excuse me, Councilor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, we'd like to acknowledge the fact that we've had great citizen input on this issue. And as you know from action taken by the council earlier this evening, we have granted a one-day entertainment license for the celebration of Juneteenth to take place on town property on June 19th. And I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful event that has been promoted very actively by local groups here in town. And I think they've done a wonderful job in organizing it, and I appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just echo the sentiment of Councilor Gallagher and Councilor Chase. It falls right in line with the resolution that was passed tonight relative to diversity and respect, and this is certainly one way of supporting that. So thank you very much. Moving on, excuse me, citizens' comments.
Did you, I didn't hear a vote on keeping it at the council level, referring it. I may have missed that. I didn't
No, I didn't. I make a motion, we keep this at the council level. To go on next meeting.
Okay, Councilor Gallagher, motion to keep it at the council level. Councilor Gallagher?
Yes.
And Councilor George, any further?
No.
Okay, any discussion from the council? Okay, seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colom Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, before I move on, for Attorney Rollins, to be clear, do I need another vote for letters OP, Q and R?
Yes, you do. I would think for the sake of efficiency, unless you all find some need to parse those out tonight, because you think one is going to be longer than the other, or you're going to skip any or adjourn, I would just take those as a group to take past 10:30.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay, seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Colom Bodas? Mr. Colom Bodas?
The meeting.
He's still here.
I know. Okay, Mr. Colom Bodas must have stepped away. We'll call it eight in favor, none against.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So moving on, citizens' comments. Any citizens wishing to comment, please state your name, street, and keep it to three minutes or under, please. Mr. Baumgarten?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, good. I just wanted to say it's also past my bedtime, but I wanted to thank you all for passing the resolutions with regard to the pride flag and the continued focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. As I mentioned at the last meeting, it's a really exciting time to see the council willing to be out in the forefront on these issues. I wanted to share with you one comment that was made tonight during the candlelight vigil. And it refers to the fact that those of us who've been active over the last year since the George Floyd incident, working hard to bring diversity, equity, and inclusion, there's a tendency to want to slack off, to take a rest, to back off. But it was pointed out to us that that's another piece of white privilege, that we can just step out anytime we want and stop the efforts. Whereas people of color, people from other cultures, the Chinese, the Jewish people and such, they have to live with the oppression every day. So I just want to remind you all that this is not a stopping point, that this is just a step along the way, and that we, the members of the town and the town council, have to keep up these efforts. So I just want to remind you all that this is not a stopping point, that this is just a step along the way, and that we, uh, the members of the town and the town council have to keep up these efforts, uh, to keep working for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We can't just step back and relax. We have to avoid that bit of white privilege. So I look forward to another year of, uh, progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens, for citizens' comments?
Yeah, I didn't tell you where I live, sixty Short Street.
I think we know that.
Thank you.
I, I'm Verna Domingo, thirty-six Saddle Drive, Bridgewater. Uh, I just want to comment, Town Council on passing those resolutions unanimously, both for the pride flag and for the diversity issues. This confirms what we've long felt, that this town and this council is an organization in the town that really welcomes diversity and feeds on that, and so that's really, very important. It's significant for today, but for the future generations as well. Uh, I, we received a message from the culture club at the high school. This is the club of students, um, who are very encouraged by this progress. Uh, and so I'm just going to read shortly their statement, um, in support, of course, of council's position here. Uh, the diversity cul- culture club says, "We are writing in support of the initiative to raise the rainbow pride, pride flag at Bridgewater at Town Hall for the month of June Pride Month in celebration and support of LGBTQ community, uh, especially LGBTQ youth and adults in Bridgewater. We all deserve to know that our town is a safe place for us to live our authentic lives in peace." I think that's a very powerful statement coming from the next generation. Uh, our students at the high school will feel very, very pleased with this outcome. Thank you very much, Town Council.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I really didn't, um, mean to speak so quickly after I left, but we had a discussion, uh, you, you had a discussion, I should say, about, um, the memorial building and.
Fitzgibbons, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, yes, Tim Fitzgibbons, South Drive. Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you for keeping me on track. I appreciate that. Um, but, uh, you had a discussion about the memorial building, and, uh, to me, the most important thing about the memorial building is, as soon as you walk up and you look at the facade, it says, "A memorial." And when you look on either side of the entranceway, it's all of the, uh, all of the people from Bridgewater who, uh, were killed in the Civil War. And we've expanded that to the common, and we've, we've created memorials for, uh, World War One, World War Two, Korea, et cetera, et cetera, uh, beyond that, and, um, I just want to remind everyone, and I hope the president will, uh, speak about it, if he had, if he hasn't, uh, yet, uh, that Memorial Day is coming up on Monday, and it's the day we remember all of those folks, uh, who died in the service of our country, and, uh, we, we gather on the common to remember them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Uh, I see Janet's iPad, uh, with a hand held up.
Hi, thank you, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Um, thank you for everybody for their time tonight. Long meeting for everyone. I, I just want to, um, say I agree with Mr. Gallagher on the, uh, resolution that, um, we really don't need one to tell us how the votes were. Um, but I do feel that last paragraph, not just the last sentence, but the whole thing should be scratched, and the only comment, um, that seemed to take precedent was, um, the comments people said about the voters with pandemic situation. I personally didn't even consider that in my letter that I had written and my comments. Um, I, I don't feel that that should take over on the, um, conversation that Mr. Wood and Mr. Chase were talking. And also, Mr. Wood mentioned there was eighty percent turnout for the November election. I want to know, does he mean eighty percent showed up at the poll itself, or was he including all the early voting? Um, so, and I just would like to know, of the people who voted, if there's any way of knowing the age group for the yes votes, if there was a lot of eighteen-year-olds, under twenty-one-year-olds that voted, um, that would be interesting statistic, uh, to point out, but, um, I do hope that this resolution gets scratched, and, um, just don't harp on the fact that people were talking about pandemic. And again, I thank you all for your time tonight. Good meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Hunt?
Thank you very much. I'm hoping you're hearing me. Give me a thumbs up if you are.
You're good.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to thank the council and, and the town manager for having the two absolutely informative, uh, meeting sessions tonight. Uh, the memorial building has benefited greatly from town citizens' participation. I think Steve Rogan, uh, David Moore, and several of us, the Community Preservation Committee had a lot to say with getting that project to its current status, and I think those people need to be recognized. Uh, as to the fire station thing, uh, thank you, uh, President, for mentioning my name. Uh, I have a passion for getting it right in town, and, uh, I think the presentation was really super good and brought a lot of things out, and I hope the town is more than willing in the future to provide the funding necessary to get our fire, uh, stations up to, up to par, if I might say so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hunt, and I do not see any other hands raised. Uh, I would ask one more time, any citizens that wish to speak during citizens' comments?
I don't see anybody.
I am not seeing any either, so I'm going to move to council comments, starting with Counselor George.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, so this is the first time since we've been doing Zoom that my wireless headphones have died on full charge. So, uh, but, um, no, I, I appreciate everyone's, uh, input. Um, very excited for the things that we were able to get accomplished tonight. And, uh, again, I, I will reiterate, um, if there is a move to, uh, zone for retail marijuana, I will be a firm supporter that it needs to go to a town-wide vote. Uh, everyone has a vested interest in whatever's proposed, and I do not feel that is right for the town council to keep, you know, to, to make that decision. So, uh, and I'll, I'll keep, uh, anytime this comes up, I will keep reiterating that. And lastly, I hope everyone practices the mute button on the town council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor George. Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. To be, uh, just very brief, two things. Number one is, as, um, former counselor, uh, Fitzgibbons mentioned, Monday, um, is Memorial Day, and I think there will be a service at the common. Um, I hope the townspeople can come out and, um, whatever, um, social distancing was required or whatever, just come on out and pay their respects to those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. It's very important. It's a very important ceremony we have every year at the town, uh, common. Uh, secondly, uh, to echo, uh, Counselor George's, people need to mute. Some counselors need to mute, and don't be so disruptive during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. Counselor Perry?
Uh, thank you. Um, again, just to echo, uh, the sentiments of, uh, of mentioning, uh, Memorial Day weekend this weekend, uh, I hope, uh, people can come out to, uh, honor those that have given the ultimate sacrifice, and, um, hopefully have a nice day to, to gather. Uh, it will be after May twenty-ninth, so, um, if you are concerned about, uh, masks wearing or not wearing masks, just be aware that, uh, being outside in the states changes after May twenty-ninth, less people will probably be wearing masks. Um, secondarily, I know, I believe this is going to be our last meeting with, uh, with Ann, so I do want to again thank her for all of her service. Um, and, uh, will be, uh, missing hearing her voice, uh, during all these roll calls. Uh, but I want to thank her for all of her years of service, and, uh, she will be, uh, greatly missed, and, uh, good luck in your new position.
Thank you, Counselor Perry. Counselor Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just briefly wanted to mention that I think it's been a very, uh, productive meeting for us tonight in terms of the resolutions that were brought forward and passed with respect to, uh, diversity and inclusion, and, uh, the Juneteenth celebration and, uh, and Pride Month as well. I think that, uh, taken together, uh, uh, the, these votes really represent, uh, a very good picture of what the council, uh, stands for, and I think that it's important that, uh, the citizens recognize that and know that the council, uh, stands behind them in support of these kinds of efforts, and, um, uh, I thank my fellow counselors for their support of these measures.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Souza?
I would just like to thank Ann for all the years of service to the council and wish her all the best in her next position. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Souza. Counselor Moore?
Um, I think like others have said, I, I'm excited for the Juneteenth celebration, and thanks to B C C R, and I think it was the first parish that, that helped hold that together. Uh, that's great, and also, uh, again, it's exciting to see the town council move forward, um, just pushing the idea of diversity and keeping it, uh, top of mind and taking action on it. I think that's great. Um, also, uh, wish Ann the best of luck, and, and lastly, just wanted to thank the citizens, most of whom have left, but a lot of them stayed with us through a very late night, so I wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Um, I just want to warn Josh that, uh, this is not a long meeting. We've had some much longer meetings in the past. We can do it again. Um, so thanks. Um, couple of great resolutions tonight on, on respect and, and, you know, the other parts. Um, you know, respect extends to a lot of other subjects as well, so counselors, as, as you get emails from various people on the issue about marijuana, remember when someone says that, you know, we're, we're reinforcing drug use, or that there are drug users out there, that's why I put, asked to put the question on the ballot. I asked to put the question on the ballot because someone is not going to come to the microphone at one of these meetings when others in the room are going to call them a drug user or a drug pusher. And so we saw the results when it was a secret ballot, and to answer the question, no, we can't tell if someone voted yes or no. We don't know what their ages are. We know who voted, but we can't tell, you know, how they voted. We just know what the, what the results were, so. Um, you know, I, I'm tired of being called a, a drug pusher myself. Um, I'm not doing it for that. The, the world has moved on. The United States has moved on. Massachusetts has certainly moved on. We need to control our, our own destiny here, and, um, we need to control it before someone else hands it to us, um, through a judgment or something else. So, so that's the point. Um, a good meeting. Um, welcome to the new members again. Ann, sorry, I've pushed you out of the office, but, um, uh, you'll do well wherever you land. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wood. Counselor Colomotus? Did he, is he there?
Uh, you know what? Excuse me, Mr. President. Uh, Counselor Colomotus chatted and said that he had to leave.
Okay. All right, thank you. Well, first and foremost, I will be quick. Ann, thank you very much for your service to the town and certainly to the council, and, uh, probably the shining light in this is that you're not leaving the town and you're staying in town as a town employee, and probably a great resource to all of us on the council. Uh, want to thank, uh, Chief Del Monte for his work in grants. Uh, click it or ticket. They'll be out in enforcement, uh, May twenty-four through June sixth. There was a press release, so if you get caught without a seatbelt, you know, you've been warned, I guess. And lastly, just to add, the Memorial Day event on the town common, the laying of the wreaths, I would just ask that for many of the parents, what I've seen over the years is just a smaller and smaller participation in Memorial Day and Veterans Day, uh, events, and I would encourage you to bring young children to these events so that they continue and don't wean away over the course of time. So I think it's really important for children to understand, um, the ultimate sacrifice that members of the military have made, and, uh, you can do that by participating in events like this on the common and having discussions about, you know, service in the military and whatnot. So with that, I would say that moving on to executive session, there is none, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. A roll call vote.
Uh, can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Emphatically, yeah.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Ann, yes.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Thank you, Ann, yes.
Can I have a vote too?
Yes, yes.
And emphatic, we're adjourned. Eight in favor, none against.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good night.